For December 12th to order. We'll start the meeting with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the armed forces, which will be followed by the invocation by Pastor Randy Fullerton with the Glendale Baptist Church, and then the pledge of allegiance by our lovely county administrator. If everybody would please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, as we come to you today, we thank you so much for the opportunity to gather here in a country that is free, that lets us have meetings like this. We certainly do want to lift up and pray for our responders and all those who help us in time of need. We thank you, Father, for the opportunity to, at this time of year, to show love and mercy to all those around us. What a great time of the year of celebrating what you've given us as a perfect gift. I pray today, as the commission goes through all these agenda items, that you will guide them with wisdom, that you will put your words in their mouth, that as they look at these things, that you will be guided, you will guide them to make the best decisions that is right for the people and also for our county. I just thank you so much, Lord, for all that you have given us, and I pray that we will take a time this year just to be thankful to live in this great land and to be able to love you and receive your love. Now go with us and watch over these proceedings. For Father, we would ask in your most holy name, amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Commissioners? We do have an addition under consent, item 8P, which is utility work by highway contractor agreement with FDOT for the adjustment of utility valves for the State Road 60 resurfacing from west of County Road 512 to west of 94th Drive. So is there any other additions or deletions?
No.
Move to approve as amended. I have a motion by Commissioner Moss with a second by Commissioner Fletcher. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And real quick, before we get into proclamations, I just want to take a point of privilege to congratulate George Streetman, who is the former president and general manager of Hogan &amp; Sons here in Vero Beach. He will be inducted into the Florida Citrus Hall of Fame on March 1st of 2024. So I thought it was kind of a good opportunity to highlight our citrus industry and congratulate him on his accomplishments. And with that, we will move on to proclamations and presentations. Our first is a proclamation honoring Robin Miller on her retirement from the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners. Is Robin or somebody here? Fantastic. All right. It is my great pleasure to read a proclamation honoring Robin Miller on her retirement from Indian River County Board of County Commissioners Rental Assistance. Whereas, Robin Miller retired from the Indian River County Community Development, now Planning and Development Services Rental Assistant Division effective September 29th, 2023. And whereas, Robin Miller began her career with Indian River County in the General Services Department on August 14th, 2008, as a rental assistance program manager. In her first six months with the county, Robin was able to advance the rental assistance program from standard to high performer, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's highest designation. And whereas, Robin Miller has worked tirelessly to keep the county's rental assistance program designated as a high performer throughout her tenure and has dedicated herself professionally and personally to helping people in need at a level that is rarely seen among public servants. And whereas, Robin Miller's 15 years of dedication and operational knowledge of the rental assistance division will be greatly missed. Robin has ensured her legacy will continue as she is leaving the division in capable hands. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board applauds Robin Miller's hard work, which has directly benefited thousands of residents through the years to be able to have safe housing through the rental assistance program, and the Board wishes to express their appreciation for the dedication, the dedicated service she has given to Indian River County for the last 15 years. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners and staff extend heartfelt wishes for Robin to enjoy her success and to have a restful retirement, adopted this 12th day of December, 2023. And I just want to say, I know Robin has been an integral part of that program, has really brought it to a whole new level. She will be greatly missed. She is and always has been a force to be reckoned with when it comes to rental assistance and just has been able to accomplish so much. So we're very proud to have, to have her as one of ours.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I would echo those comments immensely. She is probably one of the foremost authorities on rental assistance in the state. I have worked with her for the last several years on the yearly resolutions that we have to pass. She is on the money every single time and prepared. I enjoyed working with her and I wish her all the best.
For sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wish Robin was here and I hope she's able to watch. She's been, she has been an integral part of the housing endeavors. And I once told her, I said, you know, you can pull a rabbit out of a hat that wasn't even born yet. And she says, her response was, well, there's a sonogram. I mean, she just had a great sense of humor and a tremendous drive in every endeavor. I worked with her with the Crime Prevention Program many years ago, COOP, and then she moved into housing, and there was a lot of applications that she studied to ensure that people had safe, affordable housing at difficult times when the funding was not exactly even with the market. So, but she really did. That's what I meant by pulling a rabbit out of a hat that wasn't born yet. So, Robin, thank you so much, and we appreciate everything that you've done for the residents, the future residents, and those in need in the housing world. Thank you for all you've done.
Commissioner Moss?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to say a special thank you to her. As my colleagues may recall, during COVID, we had a huge amount of extra federal funding, and there was a scramble to make sure that that was used at that time of her rental assistance. And I know she worked extra hard to do that, to accomplish that, and I appreciate all of her efforts. So special thanks.
Anthony?
Thank you. Yeah, it wasn't long after I started working with Robin that I realized she had a really special level of dedication to her job. It's not something you can teach or learn. She just had it, and she really cared about what she was doing, and she was helping people. So that really made a difference. And I think maybe the greatest gift is that has transferred to her staff. I mean, they have just taken that ideal and brought it forward. So although she's no longer working with us here, they're really carrying on the legacy that Robin brought.
There's big shoes to fill.
Very big.
Very big shoes. But we're happy to have you guys as well. Anybody else want to say anything? All right, well.
Madam.
Yes.
I just want to thank Robin for all her years of service to the community, and I know her staff will miss her, and we appreciate everything she's done for the community, as well as we wish her success. And as the resolution, the proclamation says, a restful retirement.
Fantastic.
I would like to thank you all for presenting her proclamation for her today, even though she is not present. She's been a big part of my life, our, our lives, and she's forever going to be missed, and very big shoes to fill, but I'm willing to take it on.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, I know she's not here, but we do have the proclamation. Do you guys want to come up and get a picture? We can get it.
Robin, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for everything. Raise your Robin.
All right. Our next presentation is a presentation of water quality and potable water treatment facility evaluation. Shaun, that's the mouthful.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Shaun Leesky, Utilities Director. We do have a short presentation this morning, and just to kind of give a little history. In 2021, Kimley Horn had completed a study, a water quality study in September of 2021, associated with water quality within our distribution system and associated with copper pipes and, you know, some concerns that the community had had. Then I started in March of 2022 and kind of continued to hear those concerns and similar concerns within the community. And so we decided it would be important to commission kind of a second evaluation of that, just as a, as a backup, just like you do. You know, if you go to the doctor and you, you get a knee sprain, you'd like to get a second opinion. So we thought it would be important, considering the amount of concerns that were in the community, to get a second opinion. So we commissioned Tetra Tech then to do another study, similar type of a study, associated with our water quality. They, they, you can kind of see here, they went through a series of evaluations, including specifically looking at lead and copper and regulatory compliance, but also kind of looking at corrosion and what can initiate that corrosion and kind of evaluating what we call corrosion control techniques to ensure that we aren't having corrosion in our system. And then also did a kind of an evaluation of some nearby communities. So without further ado, I'm going to actually turn it over. We have a couple of individuals here with us from Tetra Tech. James Carpenter, who's going to be doing the presentation, as well as Jennifer Body, who was kind of one of our leads on the project. So thanks to them for doing the project, and I'm going to turn it over to James to present this morning.
Thank you, Shaun. I want to present this morning, hopefully briefly, but sometimes I tend to go on about something I'm passionate about, so hopefully we can go through this briefly. We did do an evaluation of the water system. We did a facility tour of both of your water treatment facilities so that we could understand their process and the finished water quality. We also collected and reviewed historical water quality information from the distribution system. As far as what the evaluation consisted of, we reviewed the process and the water quality goals for the system. We did a literature review to identify if there were any common trends in copper corrosion. We organized the lead and copper sampling results that you're required to take by the EPA Lead and Copper Rule, and we have some graphs of those here a little bit later in the presentation. We calculated a number of the standard corrosion control indices in the industry, and then we utilized the EPA manual for optimization of corrosion control, just to compare your water quality and what the recommendations in that manual would say. As far as the treatment process, both of your plants use water from the Florida aquifer. It's treated with nanofiltration, which removes both hardness and dissolved organics from the water. There's a post-treatment process that basically adjusts the pH and stabilizes the water to go in the distribution system. Your current method of corrosion control is you add a lime slurry, which is referred to here as Calflo, and carbon dioxide to the water. And the Hobart plant also uses caustic sodium hydroxide to, for final pH adjustment. And this is just a little graphic of the treatment process as the water flows through the treatment process. One thing I did mention in the previous slide that's somewhat important to corrosion control is there's a step after the membrane system that we've labeled here as degasification. That step is important because the water that you obtain from the Florida aquifer has a decent amount of hydrogen sulfide in it, which is that kind of rotten egg smelling gas that comes in the water. So that process removes that dissolved hydrogen sulfide from the water, which makes it less We looked at for both the plants what the water quality goals were compared to that to the water quality produced by the plants. The water quality goals are the same for both plants, which is very important in corrosion control because you don't want to have two different water qualities mixing in the distribution system, which can lead to corrosion. Our investigation focused mostly on pH alkalinity, which is the resistance to pH changes in the water and hardness. The pH goals, which you see at the bottom of the table here, 8.1 to 8.3, is pretty common in this state. If you want to prevent copper corrosion, you want to have a pH above eight. So you are in the right ballpark there. The county regularly goes out in the distribution system, distributed throughout the county service area, and collects water quality from a number of different locations. We requested this data and we looked at it because, once again, one thing we found in other systems is there might be an area of the system that's receiving just different water quality, maybe because it's a long way from the treatment process, maybe there's some microbiology that's causing the water quality to change. The conclusion we came to here is water quality across the entire system is very consistent, and we didn't see any variance that would cause us any concern relative to corrosion The next thing we looked at is you're required by EPA under the Lead and Copper Rule to regularly take tap samples, that's from the consumer's tap, and analyze them for both lead and copper concentration. And the sample size ranges from, over the years, from 50 up to 62 locations. We took those results and basically graphed them. We also did a statistical analysis of the results. One of the reasons for the statistical analysis is, from a regulatory compliance standpoint, the rule says that you take all your samples, you look at the 90th percentile, that's the value in which 90% of the results are less than that, and that level determines regulatory compliance. And if you notice on the graph here, this is the, the lead sampling results, the 90th percentile or the action level is .015 milligrams per liter, which is the red line on the graph. You will see that all of your tap, tap sampling results fall way below that in every sampling Then we looked at the, at the same time, lead is measured, copper is also measured in those same tap samples. The action level for copper is higher, it's 1.3 milligrams per liter, which is the red line on the graph there. You will see that all of the results from your system are pretty tightly grouped at about 10% of the action level. So from a regulatory standpoint, there is no requirement, from a regulatory standpoint, for you to have to do any further corrosion control. So moving on. The other thing we did, we looked at for each of the sampling years, we looked at those 90 percentile results. One thing we found in other systems that have multiple sources, sometimes you will see a tight little grouping of high lead or copper results indicating that there's something in that area that's causing additional corrosion above the system as a whole. If you notice throughout the years, where those 90 percentile levels have fallen are pretty randomly distributed over their service, over your service area, which we concluded to mean that, number one, there aren't any localized hotspots, areas of corrosion that we should do further investigation in. Then the next thing we did, we calculated corrosion indices. One thing I'll point out about these indices, most of the indices we use are relative to whether calcium carbonate is going to precipitate or be dissolved. Calcium carbonate, if you look in the pictures, that's that scale buildup, and if you have high hardness in your water, that's when it's calcium carbonate usually that's causing white stains on your plumbing if you have high hardness. So one of the corrosion control measures is, we want to make sure that your water is slightly scale forming, not to the point where it's going to cause, what you see here, the pipes to fill up with scale, but to the point where any materials in your distribution system, like ductile iron pipes, are lined with a cement mortar lining to make sure that those stay intact and are not dissolved by the water. There aren't any indexes, unfortunately, specific to copper corrosion. There was one that was developed in the UK probably about 10 years ago, but it's not really used because it just hasn't been proven out. If you look at the indices overall, the water would be considered to be slightly corrosive towards iron, not copper, and slightly corrosive towards lead, which is that chloride to sulfate mass ratio you see there. But obviously, your lead tap sampling results indicating that, indicate that lead is not an issue. And, and finally, way back, well, I shouldn't say way back, about, I think it was about 10 years ago, up until that point, calcium carbonate and calcium carbonate precipitation was considered the primary method of corrosion control for lead and copper. In the most current revision of the EPA Lead and Copper Rule, that has been dropped as a method of corrosion control. And, and I guess just to say one more thing about calcium carbonate precipitation, obviously, if the water wants to scale, that's going to happen near the treatment plant, and as you get further and further away from the treatment plant, it's less likely to form a scale because it's already come to some type of equilibrium, which is why calcium carbonate precipitation is not an effective method of corrosion control. As far as preventing copper corrosion goes, I put the picture here, my shiny penny is not as shiny as it was when I took the photograph, but to basically illustrate what you'd actually like to go on in your copper plumbing system is, you put in the new shiny copper, the water has some dissolved oxygen, it's got a chlorine residual in it. What you want to happen is to form a brown oxide coating like on this penny, which then protects the pipe from further corrosion if it's uniformly distributed inside the pipe. So that's one way of passivating or preventing the pipe from further corrosion. Scaling, as we just talked about, you can feed various chemicals that will react with the metal in the pipe to form a scale that doesn't dissolve and protects the pipe, like And corrosion generally occurs, and I think the type of corrosion that your customers have experienced has been when those layers become disruptive, disruptive. And I hate to use the Star Wars analyses, analysis, but I will. Generally, pitting occurs where there's a disturbance in the force, if you will, or there's a disturbance in the chemistry, or the metal makeup at the surface of the pipe. That is the initiation of a pit, so it's a breakdown of that protective scale or corrosion layer that's built up in there. And then, once that pit is initiated, then after that, that's where water quality comes in, and water quality then influences how quickly that pit is going to grow and potentially perforate through the wall of the pipe. And that process, in a highly corrosive water, could take a period of months, up to, maybe up to 20 years, to actually take place and go perforate the pipe. There are a lot of common causes of copper corrosion. All that I've listed here, the ones that I've bolded are the more common ones. The ones that aren't emboldened are possible, less common. One thing I would say about all of these common causes is, none of them are water quality. They're all related to the installation of the pipe, the situation that the pipe is in, but none of those actually relate to water quality itself. Where water quality comes in is, if the water quality itself is corrosive, then once these causes are present, it accelerates the rate of corrosion. So water quality-related corrosion is, and pitting in cold water is usually due to low pH, low pH meaning less than a pH of seven, which is neutral, it's not acid, it's not alkaline. And generally, as I mentioned before, a pH of above eight in most systems tends to prevent any copper corrosion. If there are an excessive amount of dissolved oxygen or dissolved carbon dioxide in the water, that can lead to accelerated copper corrosion, and if the water contains sulfides, such as I mentioned earlier, hydrogen sulfide. There's also concentration corrosion, cell corrosion. So if there's a little crack or crevice in the pipe, like at a joint, some water seeps in there, it then becomes stagnant, the water quality changes, it reacts with the pipe, that can accelerate corrosion. that can accelerate corrosion. Erosion corrosion is basically, if there were a lot of particulates in the water, or if the velocity in your plumbing system is very high, it can actually erode the metal surface of the pipe. We did do quite a bit of literature review, which is all summarized in our report. I think the first bullet is probably the most instructive. Water quality plays a role, but other factors are equally or oftentimes more important. As I mentioned earlier, there's not a clear set of, you know, have this, this, and this in your water quality, and there will be no copper corrosion. The roles of pH and sulfate in many more recent studies are very contradictory. There does seem to be some type, some sort of condition consensus that free carbon dioxide and sulfides will accelerate copper pitting. And as I put down at the, the bottom there, your current treatment practice does actually remove sulfides, and the concentration of free dissolved carbon dioxide is very low in your water. So in conclusion, the county system is compliant with all of the regulatory standards, and your practices are consistent with practices in the industry. We did make some recommendations, which I'll try to go through quickly, just to maybe further optimize the treatment process, a little bit from the standpoint of corrosion control, a little bit from the standpoint of potentially reducing the cost of treatment and the quality of the water. And the recommendations we made apply solely to water quality, and obviously, all the other factors that contribute to corrosion control, the utility does not have control over. So the recommendations, we recommended that you lower the hardness of the water a little bit. That will make it, I think, better for the consumers, a little bit softer water, less The process of adding lime is causing a little excess turbidity at the treatment plant, it will help take care of that, and it will reduce the chemical costs and still maintain that positive stability of the water. We recommended that you look at potentially further increasing the pH above eight, which is a recommendation in EPA manual. There's no regulatory reason to do that, but it might be helpful in further reducing the potential rate of copper corrosion. We also suggested you increase the pH going to your gas fires. I know this is getting a little technical out there, but what that will do for you, that'll increase the alkalinity, higher alkalinity is almost always better for a less corrosive water, and it will reduce amount of sulfates in the form of sulfuric acid you have to feed to the system. If you want to go further beyond to that, to try to further reduce copper corrosion, then feeding a corrosion inhibitor product, like an orthophosphate, or possibly zinc polyphosphate to the system, could be added. One of the things that we strongly recommend is that any change to the water process be done slowly for two reasons. One, rapid changes in water quality tend to cause corrosion, i.e., Flint, Michigan, if you've heard about their water crisis and the lead release that they had in that system. So any changes, we want to make them slow, and we want to be able to observe the impact upon the distribution system. We also suggested the county could possibly set up a pipe test rig at the treatment facility that would allow you to establish a minch line with the current treatment, and then as you make changes, you could see how that impacts the rate of corrosion. And we also provided a set of steps for implementation, which I'm not going to present here, but they are in the report. And with that, I'm going to conclude, and take any questions if you have them.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Thank you. What I got from your presentation and your study was that we have a, a sound water supply that has a lower propensity for pitting and porosity of copper pipe. You have recommendations that I'm sure that our utilities director has embraced and will in going forward. I wanted to ask you, you've, this is not your first study with water?
No, sir.
And you've done that throughout the state?
Yes, sir, and other states.
How do we compare in the state of Florida?
I, I think you, I think you compare with other systems that we've studied, I think is very similar. The, the thing about the state of Florida is, though, you have a wide range of, excuse me, treatment. Like, in the center of the state, they simply pump it out of the ground and chlorinate it and put it out in the distribution system. There are a lot of still lime softening systems, so there are a lot of differences, but for a membrane treatment system like you have, your finished water is very comparable. If anything, it's a little bit higher, maybe in calcium, than some other systems, but there's nothing wrong with that.
Okay. So we're, again, if, if, if you had to rank us, are we doing it, or we need to do a whole lot more? I know you had recommendations.
No, I think, no, I think you're doing a really good job. The corrosion is kind of a funny thing in the sense that maybe what works in one place doesn't work in another place. We've done another, a number of studies where we feed different corrosion inhibitors, and one system, one product may work great, and the other system, it not, may not do a very good job, so it's a system by system. But your, your basic water quality that you're putting out to your customers is very good, it meets all the regulatory standpoint, standards.
Commissioner Fletcher, if I may too, real quick. You know, it's, it's really difficult to compare a one utility to the next, because source water is very different, treatment is very different, and because of that, you can't say that we rate here, we rate here. You know, and I think what you hear James saying is, is that based off of the water quality that we have and the treatment that we're doing, the water quality is, is where it needs to be.
Sustainable and not promoting pitting and porosity?
No, it's def, it's definitely not promoting pitting, and like I tried to emphasize, the pit initiation is what really starts the process, and it really has nothing to do, or doesn't have too much to do with the water quality. And the water quality itself, I think you can see from your copper results, if, if we had levels that were close to that action level, that would indicate a high level of copper corrosion in the system, and you really don't see that in your results.
Thank you.
Do you have a plan, Sean, for some of these recommendations, or is that something we need to consider at a later date?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at that, and I know, and Leon and our, and our, some of our operational staff is here today as well. You know, we're doing what we can to implement those recommendations, and as you heard in the presentation, what James said, you know, we're trying to implement them slowly, we don't want to just jump in and make a bunch of changes. I know we're trying to do some things to address turbidity, and we're trying to do some things to adjust the pH, but again, we're doing it, we're doing it slow, and we want to adjust that, recognizing that any kind of, any quick adjustments to that water quality can have impacts, you know, unintended consequences as well. So we want to do it slowly and evaluate the system to make sure that those adjustments aren't having negative impacts as well.
Perfect, yes, but sometimes you can go too far with trying to correct the problem and create a whole nother problem.
Right, and it's, and it's always good to evaluate your system and look for ways to optimize your, your treatment. You know, I kind of equate it to, you know, you look at professional athletes, and you know, they're, even, even though they're professional athletes, they're always looking for an edge, a way to get better. And, you know, all we're doing is, with this, is looking a way for, for ourselves to get better.
Commissioner Moss?
I just had a question, well, really for everyone out there. What advice, if any, and this is for both of you, would you give the homeowner in terms of preventing, preventive measures? I noticed that one of the contributing factors can be chemicals that are poured down drains. Could you elucidate that and perhaps suggest some other things that the, our homeowners can take to heart? Thank you.
I, I, I would say the, I'll address that in a second. I would say the three most important things that homeowners can do are, number one, don't leave your house for a couple months and let the water in there become stagnant. That is, one cause is pretty prevalently mentioned in the literature is, a new home will be built, they'll fill it full of water to pressure test the piping, and then it might sit there for a couple months until it's sold, and there's a pretty good correlation between that stagnant water and copper pitting and corrosion problems taking place. So that's number one. Number two, if your, if your electrical system is grounded to your copper plumbing, that's the second probably most common cause, because corrosion is an electrochemical process, so if you've got the flow of current in that pipe, that can induce corrosion. And then the, the third thing I would mention is, if the homeowner has put in their own home treatment system, the utility has worked very hard to put out a water that is, meets the regulatory stand, standards, and is good for their use, but if somebody comes along and sells you a system to treat your water in the home, you have just undone all of the work the utility has done to make adjustments to that water quality. As far as aggressive chemicals, that was more related to copper drain pipes, so if you have your sink and at some point in that system, it's plumbed with copper piping, that's really what that comment was for, not for the drinking water side.
Thank you. We have this on the website, right, an explanation of copper piping. Mr. Lisi, I'm just wondering if we can add some tips to homeowners to that?
Yeah, we have something up on the website currently that, that kind of summarizes the, the report and, and actually includes a link to the, to the report itself. Certainly, we can talk about and look at ways that we can put some recommendations, as James alluded to. Here are some common things to, to look out for.
Yeah, that, that would be great. Thank you both.
Awesome. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. All right, Commissioners, next item is approval of the minutes, which we don't have any, so that's not the next item. The next item is going to be informational items, just a couple things while we're here on informational. Remind everybody that there is a time certain cybersecurity executive session at 10:30. And also attached to the informational items is the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee appointments. And I do want to let you guys know that what is attached to the agenda has changed slightly. We do have a District Two appointment, Mr. Kevin Borwick, and the letter that we submit to Treasure Coast Regional will reflect such. Other than that, we will move on to consent, and just as a reminder, we did add AP to consent. Is there anybody that'd like to pull anything from consent? Anybody from the public wishing to pull anything from the consent agenda?
The chair moved approval.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher with a second by Commissioner Moss. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with Commissioner Ehrman app. All right, with that, here we are here, we'll move on to constitutional officers. Item 9A, Sheriff Eric Flowers, regarding arcades in Indian River County. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for making time for me today, and I came before you some time ago to discuss four different items that were of concern to me, and over the past couple years, we've been addressing concerns with the arcades in our community. It was an item that was brought to me from the public, as well as our data. When we look at our data from the Indian River County Sheriff's Office, since I've been your sheriff, we've responded to arcades nearly 700 times, 682 times, and we're responding to a variety of calls for service, including robberies, thefts, burglaries, drug overdoses, disturbances. These places, while many people view them as a, a simple place for elderly people to go and gamble, have turned into drug dens and crime generators of illegal activity in our community. Many of these places have become a blight on our community, and so we set out to address this issue and use our state laws to do that. We worked with our partners at the Gamely Commission out of Tallahassee, that's a new organization that's just come about, come online in the last couple years, and basically, they've advised us that everything that's happening in those adult arcades is illegal. There are only certain ones that are allowed to happen, and none of them are authorized in Indian River County. So we did investigations, we went undercover, we gambled, and we were paid out in cash, exactly what we assumed was happening in there. And after doing that, and all the other drug transactions and things that we had investigatively occur in there, we took out a number of drug dealers from these arcades, we did a variety of different things. We ultimately, at the advice of the state, issued letters to all of the arcades, and let them know that they were operating illegally, that we had done undercover operations, and that they should cease and desist. The vast majority of them have complied. Most of them are closed down right now, which is why I'm here to see you today, because it's an opportune time for us, as a community, to stand up and say, we don't want this in our community, and we don't want this happening anymore. There are a few defiant ones that opened back up or opened, remained open after we issued those letters, and our investigation continues into those locations. We're working with our partners at the Gamely Commission and other parts of the state, because many of them are tied to other parts of the state, and we will continue those investigations. But as the vast majority of them have closed down now, I'm here today to ask you guys to direct the county attorney to investigate an ordinance for our community that would suffice to allow that we wouldn't have any more of these opening up, and it just gives us a, look, Jacksonville passed an ordinance, it went all the way up to the state, it was tested to the Supreme Court. When I talked to the Gamely Commission, they're still one of the largest volume arcades, they have 130 something they're trying to combat right now. So I recognize that an ordinance isn't an end-all, be-all. We already have state statutes, it's just an additional layer to tell people that we will not tolerate this in our community. So that's what I ask is today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions for you about that.
Sure, so I just have a couple of questions or comments, I suppose.
Sure.
So generally, when you outright ban things, there are certain private property rights and other things like that, similar to other adult entertainment businesses, you can't necessarily ban them, but you can regulate them to the point where it's very difficult for them to locate or operate.
Correct.
So I, I just want to make sure, whatever we decide, that we're not putting ourselves in a position where we're going to get some kind of legal pushback. I'm, I'm all about addressing this, I think it is a problem. I'm, I'm all about addressing this. I think it is a problem in certain areas. But is there a way to make sure we're threading that needle? Is regulation something that is more appropriate than banning per se?
So my recommendation is that we look at the Jacksonville ordinance and what they did there. Everybody seems to say that that's the standard model that's worked across the state and other places. Martin County does not have a single arcade and they never had any open up because they preemptively put in ordinances and did things. So I'm open to however the commission feels it's best to address it. I agree. We don't need any additional lawsuits. I don't want to get sued either. Obviously, the county attorney would be best to address that. And I'm, I'm open to however it is you guys feel appropriate to handle this.
Commissioners?
Yes.
I'm, I'm fine with directing the county attorney to proceed with this. I don't know about your districts, but I get complaints from people in my district about arcades and having to do with anything from litter and noise to crime, you know, drug dealing. So, you know, I've, I've heard it.
You know, please understand, there are plenty of great people that go to the arcades, that it's a source of entertainment for them. You know, there are arcade owners who are feeding them and taking care of them and we understand that. But there's another seedy downside to this and it's the after-hours crowd. It's the evening crowd. It's the stuff that comes along with it. Eight drug overdoses attached to these arcades. Why would we have drug overdoses in arcades? If we respond at 680 times to any other business in our community, obviously Walmart, we go too many times. Sheriff, you're well aware of that. And there are other businesses that work as crime generators as well. But these specific places have just caused us so much, they've used up a lot of tax dollars and resources along the way. And I'd like to find a way to put that to an end.
I don't know if, if an ordinance is the way to handle this. I spoke with the administrator in depth yesterday and I think he's got some other ideas. Also, I'm not so sure that our attorney should be drafting an ordinance for the sheriff's office, to be quite frank with you. I mean, he's got his hands full as well. So, John?
I guess my, I wanted to, you made a comment. I just want to verify, Sheriff. Are you looking to ban future ones? So those that legally exist today would be able to operate, provided they operate within the confines of the existing state laws?
There's none legally operating in Indian River County. There's not a single one that, that is or has ever legally operated.
But if, so just for, not for argument's sake, but if, if you had one that was to change, they, they have a license, they're operating. I get it that many of them that you've been raiding are operating legally. If they change their operations to come into compliance with the law and no, or no longer were violating the law in terms of gaming machines, cash and all that, then they would be fine. But it's the one, those are the ones that we're worried about is that there's, I understand there's the ones in the middle, you know, not the Chuck E. Cheese ones, but they're the ones where they do the gift cards and the Visa cards and all that. I mean, are those the ones that we're looking to?
In talking to our partners at the Gaming Commission, there's no avenue for that. There's a misconception that over the years, there was some way for this to happen. And the Gaming Commission was established because locally this wasn't being dealt with enough. And so these are being raided all around the state. We feel like we've done a good job without spending a lot of tax dollars by asking them to close. And most of them recognize that they are operating illegally and they have complied. I, I would like to find a way that, you know, they're not allowed to be in our county whatsoever. That's my preferred method. And obviously Sheriff, if, if you want me to direct my legal counsel to draft the ordinance, I have no problem doing that and bringing it back to you. But in our last conversation prior to Mr. Braw, obviously Dylan had experience in Jacksonville and so, but I'd be happy to do that. I have no problem doing that and bringing it back to you.
Commissioners, I've taken a look at the Jacksonville ordinance and it is regulated by the county. What the Jacksonville ordinance does is allows two arcades to operate in Duval County outside of some of the cities that, that may, or towns that may be also in Duval County. It forces those businesses to go ahead and register with the county. They are then inspected by the county. They have to provide certain documentation that their machines are fair in some situations, that it's truly a game of chance, combined with some skill that might be involved in it. The machines must be calibrated, they must be identified. And it falls under our code enforcement, or Jacksonville has their code enforcement folks enforcing the arcade ordinance. There's a large exception that's cut out for the Chuck E. Cheese exemption, where you go ahead and get a card or deposit tokens in a machine for on-premises merchandise. I think what is happening now, or the loophole that some of the arcades were using, was that they would go ahead and play the game of chance. They would win. They would go ahead and turn their winnings in and receive a gift card. They used that as the same example as the Chuck E. Cheese, that they're going ahead and redeeming their winnings for on-premises merchandise. And Sheriff, is that legal?
So according to the Gaming Commission, no. They're, they're saying no, absolutely not. I mean, they were with us when we did our raid. Their top team was here with us. And they say there are certain machines that are allowed to operate in this capacity. There are certain places in South Florida where it's regulated and they said Indian River County is not one of those places. So I'd be happy to, you know, have them work with you on this or my legal team. I have no problem having my team do it, whatever you guys want us to do.
Which is fine, but the Jacksonville ordinance supplies the remedy for closing these places down by injunction, just like we would go after someone that would have, you know, junk cars or weeds and, and grass growing up too high or anything like that. I would be happy to help as far as drafting the ordinance or anything like that. But I guess my question is, law enforcement can do it a whole lot faster and a whole lot cheaper than the county can. Because the goal of code enforcement is compliance. We will send out a notice. We will have them come and appear before us. They will present their case as far as why they are operating within the confines of the law. We will encourage them, I guess, to close down if that would be the code enforcement method, just like we try and get people to clean up their yards or get rid of their junk cars. But again, I, I, I guess if it's something that's already against the law, why do we need to have a very slow process take care of it when there's an established process that, that's available to us?
My, my argument would be it's a lot more expensive for me to have guns and badges out there dealing with this kind of stuff than having regulatory civilians do it. I would much rather have it be handled with a code enforcement way. When my folks are busy with traffic homicides and all the things that are happening in our county, I mean, the public is clamoring for us to do more traffic enforcement and do those things. I'd much rather have my guys dedicated to the law enforcement functions and close these down indefinitely. And if you have a few that are needed to be dealt with by code enforcement, then deal with it that way. That's my preference. If you guys say no, it's okay. No skin off my back. We'll keep enforcing it. We'll keep knocking them down.
Not saying, it's not, no. It's, you know, looking at it and again, thank you for presenting the nexus of where we are and counsel as well. You know, these arcades, they're called arcades, right? Not casinos. Because arcades started out, yeah, well, now they're casinos. The, the arcade started out many years ago where a lucky night meant a four pack of paper towels and, and the big prize was the waffle iron.
Right.
I get it. And then it did morph into the Visa gift, the gift cards, then the Visa gift cards, now it's currency. And then more recently, all you see is currency.
Absolutely.
Can't say I haven't viewed it, as you were doing your viewing. But the concerns really stem from the fallout and that's the criminal element that it's fostering. And I, I don't see it as on our side as far as ordinance for community development and our future. I, I see it as a grave law enforcement concern. So with that in mind, I mean, I think I've heard and I wanted to ask the counselor, if your, if, if your general counsel moved forward with the directive, would it be possible for us to bring it here to have public hearings? And have approval of the sheriff's ordinance?
Yes, it would. I, I would look at this a lot like regulating the vacation rentals. We had no, they, they existed. We did not close them down. We regulated them according to a new ordinance and we saw no problems as far as Burt Harris Act or private property rights. They simply became a regulated industry. My last question, I think for Sheriff Flowers, would be, what is the state attorney saying on the different operations? I mean, we, we had the, the straight-out paramutual gambling. You put in your card or you pay money, you pull the handle, you get cash back.
Right.
That's regulated under Chapter 500 and 550 of Florida statutes. The paraline, para mutual gaming laws and the gambling laws. Then you have the next stage where they're getting, you know, the blender, the toaster, the gift card or something like that. It's not cash. You take a gift card to Walmart and you buy a blender and then you try and return it for cash. They won't allow that. They'll only give you another gift card because they won't cash it out. So is that also?
A gift card is cash or cash equivalent.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
And the state attorney, what sayeth the state attorney on this issue?
I mean, they're, they've signed our search warrant. They're prosecuting that case in Roseland that we proceeded with. And, you know, they're, they're on board as well as the statewide prosecutor. I mean, St. Lucie County has a number of these raids. I'm trying to be judicious with the taxpayer dollars here and I'm not asking you guys to do the enforcement side. I, I have no problem doing the enforcement side. We, we shut them down. I'm asking that we don't let these things open in the first place, so that we never get in a situation where we're at right now. Because what's going to happen is we've put our time and energy into this thing and they've all shut down because we did that. But just like anything else, when we stop setting our patrol vehicle on that road for speeding, tomorrow the speeders are going to come through. And so the minute we take our eyes off of this, they're going to open back up again. And then I got to dedicate resources to it. I'd much rather have my guys working on drug cases and homicides and all the other things. I don't want them wasting their time on this stuff. So I'm asking to say, hey, don't let them open anyway.
In addition, the, the other complicating factor is the type of machines that's being used too. And I think that, that goes right to the state attorney's office. There are two different levels of machine and some of the locations are still using the forbidden level of machine.
Without a doubt. We're, we're down to one or two that's left operational right now in the county.
Right.
So the ones that are closed up are not problematic to me anymore. They were absolutely operating full-on casino-style slot machines. Those were absolutely happening. But those are all closed down. But I don't want them to open back up. That's what I'm, that's what I'm here about.
My thought is, Sheriff, again, we're down to just a couple. If the, the large concern is the criminal element, if you created an instrumentality and we held it here at a public hearing, we would then go forward and you'd have the tool you needed in the toolbox to address the issue in a law enforcement capacity. And you wouldn't be spending a whole lot of law enforcement time because you'd have the instrumentality to stop it.
So you guys are asking me to pass the ordinance? You want me to write the ordinance and pass it?
No, that's not exactly what I.
No.
John, talk about the code, please.
So I was going to say, so what you're asking, so I understand and I, I think you're asking maybe a two-pronged approach. You're asking, one, for the, the county to adopt an order to ban these.
Yes.
Okay. So the ones that legally exist right now, whether they're operating illegal, but they have a, a local business tax receipt, they would be able to, you said there's a few left, they'd be able to continue and law enforcement would focus on them
Absolutely.
to try to run them out. And then once they, they lose that use, then they'd be gone. But anywhere else in the county, we would not allow those. Is that what we're saying?
Love that. That'd be a great start.
So my concern, that brings back us back to my concern, which is do we have the ability to outright ban? Because what I'm hearing about Jacksonville is that, is regulation. Regulation still allows for it. It doesn't ban it.
I think what Jacksonville did was made it so difficult for the mom and pop kind of single, single location or maybe two or three locations to go ahead and get the permits necessary. Because they have to, number one, apply for the permit. Number two, they have to hire an expert that reg, that tests their machine and certifies that those machines are within the legal limits as far as winnings, whether it be, you know, I think they said a minimum of 25% as far as winning is concerned. So, you know, if, if, if a large conglomerate comes in and can do all that stuff, that's one thing. But if we're going to shut them down on the sheriff's end of things with law enforcement, I think code enforcement can step up with an ordinance similar to Jacksonville and make it very difficult to get a license from us. And secondly, we don't have to give out an unlimited amount of licenses like you see out there now where there's an arcade in almost every strip mall, that we would only give two. And we could limit them to certain locations as well.
But to be clear, because I just want to make sure we're all talking the same language, that's not a ban. That is an overregulation similar to what we do for other adult entertainment establishments, which I'm totally fine with, but it's not a ban. There would be a path for somebody, however extreme, to be able to open one if possible. So you would regulate them out of existence, not ban them from existence.
Yes, that is a very accurate description of the Jacksonville ordinance.
My, then continuing down the rabbit hole, just so the sheriff understands, if we use the code enforcement process, the code enforcement process is a very long, arduous process. It's not quick and it, yeah, seven steps. And then it goes to, ultimately if they disagree or we are forced, it goes to court for injunction or whatever the case may be. And we don't really have super enforcement powers, even in that regard. I mean, we've seen that with some of our residential code enforcement issues. So I just want you to understand that too, because what I'm hearing that the bigger concern is, they're operating illegally anyway. So we can't pass, I mean, we don't pass ordinances related to you can't sell drugs. I mean, that's, that's a criminal offense. So they're doing criminal offenses. But the bigger concern is the surrounding criminal activity. It's kind of the broken window principle, which I get, but.
If he passed, if we pass that and there's two that you guys are regulating and code enforcement is involved in it and they're conducting illegal operations, we can go in and deal with those two. It's not whack-a-mole where I've got 15 and 20 of them, one opening up on every corner if you guys are regulating them. So one or two would be not a big deal. But having as many as we've had over the course of the last few years is very problematic for us. I mean, it's hard to even keep track of how many exist at any given time.
So I think what I'm hearing from the rest of the, or the majority of the commissioners is, if you want to have your legal counsel put something together related to the Jack, whatever it is that you want, and then submit it, then we can look at that and have a conversation about changes and setting public hearings. Is that what I'm hearing?
Let me say this, is that, and Sheriff, please understand the conversations that I've had with, with the administrator. Very few things can a county say, we banned this industry from coming in. And John, if you'd like to talk about our code that we talked about yesterday about, you know, let's say there's such a thing as a legitimate arcade, but we have singularly banned arcades if we do that. And there's some case law, John, if you want to talk about how dangerous that could possibly be.
Well, I think we, it's been mentioned, the Burt Harris. And I'd have to go back and, and refresh my memory. In a former jurisdiction in which I worked prior to the state getting involved, we actually did ban these. And, but it just, I, I think to Bill's point, I mean, the sheriff comes up with the ordinance based on the Jacksonville, we can work together with Andy, you know, and making sure, I mean, because we want to obviously regulate them for those that are operating legitimately, to make sure that they operate within the confines of the law. If they cross that boundary and they are. confines of the law. If they cross that boundary, and they are, you know, and they're operating from a criminal manner, you're going to address those. Where the other ones, if they're not following through with the regulations that we put in place to try to minimize or mitigate the deleterious effects of these, then we can use code enforcement for those. But there is an outright, the problem is that if you have somebody that has one, to outright ban it and say they got to close, to bills and commissioners and from sheriff's standpoint is, we would face the issue of a regulatory, it's like a regulatory taking. I mean, and then we'd be subject to Burt Harris' claim that our regulations have been affected, you know, impacted their, you know, their economics, their, the money they're making and stuff like that.
But your previous place where you worked, did outright ban them?
That was prior to the state stepping in and regulating, but yes, we did.
It was prior to the state statute.
Yes, completely. As a matter of fact, caught a lot of flak, but it was the right thing, because they are, they do tend to focus, and they can be very predatory in nature. We know that. And then there are the secondary impacts that, of which you've addressed, mentioned many of them.
So I think if you want to bring something back, is that what I'm hearing from you guys, and we'll get it, we'll have a further conversation and see where we go from there.
Okay.
Is what I'm hearing, is that-
Happy to work with Mr. Federman.
I'll have him reach out to you. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
All right. The next item, commissioners, I think we'll be able possibly to do the first public hearing before our time's certain. So we'll move on to 10A1, Amendment to Indian River Code, Chapter 210, Tourist Development Tax. Who is taking this? Are you taking this? You are? Fantastic.
Very good. Thank you, commissioners. If you recall back in August of 2023, the Board passed an ordinance adding an additional penny to the tourist development tax. This was earmarked for beach renourishment only. At that same time, we reallocated the existing four cents that we already charged, as far as the tourist development tax, to allot more money to beach renourishment and beach projects. And we did that by taking a quarter of a penny from the Dodger Town Jackie Robinson Training Complex allotment, and moved that over to beaches and shores. And we supplemented the, or the remaining one quarter of 1% was sufficient for us to fulfill our contractual obligation to allotting $200,000 per year for capital improvements at the Jackie Robinson Training Complex. Lo and behold, we went ahead and passed that ordinance. Lo and behold, we found out that very late in the session last year, the legislature put in and buried in a bill requiring a referendum for most tax increases, including the tourist development tax. It's not just a regular old referendum. It must be held at a general election. So what we have today is, we, since that became effective in July, we passed our ordinance in August, we have to go ahead and repeal just the part of the ordinance that charges the additional one-cent sales, or one-cent tourist development tax. We can leave intact the re-allotment that we approved back in August. So before you, you have the ordinance that accomplishes those two goals. I would ask the chair, go ahead and open the public hearing, take any input on this matter, and approve the ordinance as it is amended. Can I turn it back over to the chair?
Fantastic. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. I'm Ben Armin, the Director of Tourism and Marketing with Visit Indian River County, underneath the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce. So we appreciate what's happening. We understand what's happening. As we stated before, we supported it before. We, as the Chamber and Visit Indian River and Tourism, will continue to support it. It's important for those to realize that it's for beach renourishment, which is what we are known for, which is what we are bringing people here for, which is what they're enjoying in Indian River County. So the Chamber is fully supportive of that. Indian River County Tourism is supportive of what you have to do, understands it, and will make everyone aware of what this is for and what it's doing for our community.
Fantastic. Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Fleischer. Vice Chair Fleischer, sorry.
Make motion, I'm still here. Make motion to move staff recommendation for the ordinance and begin the process for a ballot.
All right, we have a second, or a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Lor. Any further discussion?
One last comment. I've already spoken with Leslie Swan, Supervisor of Elections. Our timeline for the referendum is August, so we'll make sure that we get the correct wording and the correct number of words that can be in the referendum and have the single subject on the ballot for November. And it's going to be a long ballot.
Well, we're limited to 75 words.
That's true, but there are many other items.
It's going to be an abundant ballot.
You will be reading for a while in the voting booth. I assure you of that.
Thank you, Councilor.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Ehrman absent. Do you guys want to do the next public hearing? Do you want to take a break and then proceed upstairs for the 10:30? Yeah, I have some questions on that. Do we want to move something up? Or do you want to take a break? Do you want to do the public comment?
Yeah.
Public discussion items?
Yeah.
All right, we are going, Andy, just to skip yours real quick, we'll come back to it.
10B1?
So we'll move on to 10B1, which is a request to speak from Dee Remol, I'm probably saying it wrong, with a request for traffic light at the intersection of 58th and 16th Street. Just as a reminder, our policy is generally not to take action on public discussion items, but if a commissioner wants to bring back a subsequent item for discussion and action on a future agenda, that would be appropriate. With that, take it away.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you guys giving me the time. I just want to basically bring this to your attention, this request for a traffic light at 58th and 16th Street, to have it on public record, and also a notice that I've submitted to you guys on all, for this traffic light. Also, the thing, too, is what I don't understand is basically, January of 2023, you guys did a, or excuse me, the engineer, traffic engineers, they did a survey on this traffic light and said it's not warranted for this intersection. But shortly after that, you installed a traffic light at 69th and 58th. Out there, as in the country, there is very low traffic. There's not been any accidents that I'm aware of, but you go back to the, our 16th and 58th, it is high volume of traffic. It has had accidents out the gazu there. I mean, as I, also in the packet that I just gave you, Friday evening at 6:30, we had, you can see that a vehicle, two vehicles collided, and one's on fire. I mean, that's not just a small, traveling very slow. They were booking. Somebody was traveling very, a high rate of speed to cause an impact where that car exploded and started to fire. I mean, it's, we need that traffic light. I mean, I've set that intersection to make a left-hand turn off of Atlantic Boulevard onto 58th, going northbound. I've sat there for 17 minutes trying to make a left-hand turn. It's unacceptable. I mean, the thing is, what I don't understand, too, is, I'm going to go back to 69th and 58th. I looked up, I found where you had work orders for that traffic light, but you did not do a survey like you did at 16th and 58th. On there, it basically states, not warranted, not warranted for that traffic light at 58th and 16th, but there was no survey for 69th and 58th. You, this guy has basically spent taxpayer money and put in a traffic light. I guess it, basically, it's to benefit the pigs that are coming out of the forest on both sides. I mean, that's out in the country. It's just not warranted.
There are many factors involved with a traffic light installation.
I understand.
And it's not, it is based upon incidents at that particular intersection or area, but not being a traffic engineer, but dealing with them, there are also many other factors. There's load in the community, as far as what attractors are there, egress, as far as necessity. These are justified through a warrant. And while that wasn't done at that time, that did not pass the test at that time, it may very well in the very near future. Traffic studies are done. We assess on a near continual basis the entire county with incidents. Every traffic incident report is sent over to our traffic engineering division as well. It's reviewed and assessed, and as far as the light on 58th and 69th, that was a warranted light for other reasons other than crashes. So again, point well taken, appreciate it.
Right.
I don't think that any taxpayer dollar was squandered on one particular light and not another, but it, it may change, the assessment may change, and in time, you know, roads are widened, then traffic lights are put in.
I hear what you're saying, but there again, if you go and look at the warrant of both traffic lights, you've got on 69th and 58th, how does it warrant it when you've got very low volume of traffic, very low, there's not many accidents, the clientele of people, there's not very many combs out there. But you go and look at 16th and 58th Street, you've got the petition I just provided you of all the people that have signed for that, and also the communities across. It is high, I've sat out there, I'm an ex-state policeman, and also I've been in risk management for over 30 years. I went out and I took a radar gun, and I've clocked traffic northbound on 58th over 70 miles an hour. And I'll also clock them going southbound on 58th, coming from College Lane, and over 60 miles an hour. I mean, it is really, really, I mean, the thing is, is basically, you've been put on notice. The thing is, is if something happens, I mean, the thing is, is you can't come back now and say, oh, jeez, we'll work on it, and we'll try to do something now. Guess what? You've been put on notice. It's no longer, I can basically say, well, it's 50% liability. Guess what? You're at 1,000% liability. What it's going to cost you to basically, if an attorney comes and basically comes and pulls that information, because now it's public record?
Well, everything we do is public record.
I understand.
Always. This doesn't just make it public record. But we hear what you're saying. We have the information that you've provided in the petition, and if a commissioner would like to bring this item back for us to take action on, then they can do that.
Okay. I'm also going to send this up to Tallahassee and also up to Grimes on the Hill.
Okay. Fantastic.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right, commissioners, is Mr. Kenny here? We had, it's 10:24. I got six minutes till I have to recess, so if you want to come on up and express your request to speak?
How are you all today?
Fantastic.
And if I don't see you again till the new year, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I'm here as, locally, I'm the Policy Media Director for Moms Literacy Chapter here in Indian River County, and primarily, we spend most of our time with the school board. And I sort of came over here today just because there's school issues that are pertinent in regards to CSAC, the Child Services Advisory Committee. What I want to talk about today is that, as a taxpayer in this county, I have issues because the school system, as you know, has its own taxing authority, that the Board can actually raise lower taxes ad verum and all that in the millage. They have, they have a maximum requirement that they're allowed to do according to state and different rules like that, and I don't want to get into all that. But the point of it is, is they have their own funding. And there's an organization that you guys work with here, and the county works with, called the Learning Alliance. And the Learning Alliance does a lot of things with literacy, and once again, they do it through the school system. The thing that happens here, though, is through Child Services, you have an organization such as that one, collecting taxpayer money from the county for the services that you guys do provide regularly, and you do keep our taxes low, which is great, and all the wonderful things you do. Everyone's focused on saving money, and that's good. But when you have something that, like the Learning Alliance, that collects money from CSAC through you guys, gives it to the school system that gets reimbursed, it's sort of like a pass-through for the school system to get additional tax dollars. And that concerns me, particularly when you have a nonprofit organization also that does very well in the private sector. Last year, if you look at the budget that they submitted with their application, it has an income of 23.76 million, 23.7 million. They have expenses of about three. They had an income after expenses, which is basically providing the services to the school system for literacy and things like that. Once again, great stuff. 19.8 million. And it's like, well, why are we giving them $425,000? That, this is the type of oversight I think that CSAC needs to step into. You know, I personally, as someone who looks at what you guys do as honorable thing, also look at it from a very shrewd accounting, I would say, and that you have to really look at charity as it's succeeding, promoting it to, so it will succeed ultimately in the private sector and not need you. And it sort of doubles here with the school system having its own taxing authority and a budget of $386 million. The school system in November, on November 13th, and you can go back and watch it on YouTube through their, through their videos, spoke at the superintendent workshop.
Mr. Kenny, this is about CSAC, not the school district, and-
Yeah, I understand.
You have 30 seconds, because I'm going to have to recess for our time's certain.
Absolutely. But go ahead, I think, go ahead, ask a question, but they did talk about this and how they want to avoid it.
We don't usually get into back and forth and public discussion items.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
But the one thing I would say is that the county doesn't fund agencies. The county funds programs, not organizations. You can, and it's on a reimbursable basis. There's a huge process that they go through-
Yes, there is.
-to vet those and to vet those programs, measurable outcomes that have to be met before any dollars are even reimbursed. There is a new guide out, I think, that CSAC is working on or has approved or is in the process of approving. I would encourage you to read that, so you understand the process more. And with that, I think that that is it.
Right, I do. I understand that process.
We appreciate it.
Because I've seen it.
All right, I gotta, very quickly, Commissioner Moss.
Yes, I'm happy to meet with you, and the meetings are open to the public. We've worked very hard-
We've worked very hard to avoid income duplication. There's a meeting next Monday, and I think it's at 4:00 or 4:30. So you're welcome to attend. The public's always welcome. And I'm happy to meet with you.
All right. Thank you so much. With that, we will recess for our 10:30 cyber thing.
Let me go ahead and read the required
Okay, perfect. That would be great.
Reporter can go ahead and take this down. Thank you very much. At this time, the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County is going to adjourn its regularly scheduled meeting for an executive session to discuss only cybersecurity-related agenda items and no others. This meeting is exempt from Florida statutes 286.011. The people that would be present at the executive session will include Dan Russell, Rachel Miller, Mike Zito, the county attorney, the county administrator, certified court reporter, and all the county commissioners. So with that, let us go ahead and adjourn to the Board of County Commissioners conference.
our regularly scheduled county commission meeting. All right, with that, we will circle back around to 10A2 2023 Indian River County amended wind speeds map, maps. This is a public hearing. Andy, welcome.
Thank you, and good morning commissioners. Andy Sapchak, Director of Planning and Development Services. I do have a brief PowerPoint to show you here. So this is the 2023 update to the Florida Building Code wind speed maps. So every three years, the Florida Building Code is updated. You last saw us in 2020 where we brought some of these very similar items to you. And we then adopt those changes that happen to the Florida Building Code at midnight on December 31st. So within the Florida Building Code, there are state wind speed maps. But the exact location of where the lines on those maps falls is actually established by local ordinance. And generally, these wind speed lines follow recognized landmarks such as major roads or waterways when possible. So before we get to the maps, I just want to briefly explain a component of this because it's a little bit confusing if somebody's watching this. On these wind speed maps, you're going to see risk categories, category one, two, three, and four. I think intuitively, your mind goes to hurricane categories, one, two, three, four. But these are actually descriptions in the building code for types of structures. A risk category one structure would be kind of the lowest level. An example would be like a screen enclosure or a storage shed. Category two is where you're going to find most of your single-family homes and other commercial-type buildings. Category three is higher occupancy buildings and four, which is kind of the highest threshold. These are like hurricane shelters, surgery, emergency surgery centers, power generating stations, so kind of the highest level there. And this is the current adopted wind speed map for the, again, the risk categories one, two, and three. And the main differentiation, or the main thing to look at here, is the line dividing the higher, a 10 mile an hour higher wind speed is I-95. So if you're on the right-hand side or the east of 95, you can see in the upper right there, those are the 150, 160, 170. If you're on the left-hand side, it's 10 miles an hour lower in each category. And this is the wind speed map for the risk category four. Again, those are those higher threshold structures. This was actually adopted in 2020. So you all saw this in 2020 and adopted this new map. Previously, the one, two, three, and four were all on the same map. And the thing to notice on this map is the dividing line is much further west. So it's not I-95, it's County Road 507 and 512. And also, on the far southeast corner, there's actually 190 mile an hour section of the county there. So why I bring your attention to that map's lines being further west, these are the state's wind speed maps. And if you look at where each one of these lines for the category one, two, and three falls, it essentially falls right down County Road 512, so much further west than 95. In fact, the difference between the two lines, our map and the state's map, is as far as 10 miles if you look at kind of the south end of the county there. So what we have for you today is a proposal to amend the wind speed maps for the categories one, two, and three and move that line west. That does two things. One, it makes our line much more consistent with the state's line, and also, it has, it just gives us one line for all of the categories. So it's kind of a simpler approach. Again, here is the risk category four map. So you can see that those lines are now of the same division. So with that, staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the proposed ordinance amending Section 401.07 of the Code of Indian River County approving the amended wind speed risk maps. And with that, I also have the building official, Scott McAdam, here, available for questions if anyone has any more in-depth technical questions on this.
Awesome. I do have some questions. Bill, do you want me to open the public hearing first and then ask my questions as part of that, or?
No, you can go ahead and ask your questions now and then open the public hearing.
Okay. So is this a requirement, or are we doing it because we want to?
Both. So it's a requirement that the local jurisdiction adopt the actual location of these lines. And again, for the two reasons of being more consistent with the state's map and also having a more simple, you know, one-line system.
What happens if we're not consistent with the state's map?
Yeah, there's a few different things. One is, we know that for the past number of years, there hasn't been much or the major construction in that area, right, west of I-95. But there is construction that's going to be happening. So for one reason is, when we say there's 10 mile an hour difference, there really isn't a 10 mile an hour difference. That's where the line is. So if you're at 150, anything east of that, we call 160, and that's the typical default. But there's programs out there that the engineers use, and it's really one mile an hour. So it can be 151, 152, or so forth. So the thing that's going to happen is if we don't move, and what Andy indicated is for the, since 2001 Florida Building Code, when we chose at that point in time, a lot less construction at that point in time, I-95 was just an easy road to choose. But now that insurance companies and so forth are getting more and more involved, we're going to have an issue with if we don't move the line, because like Andy said, 10 miles down at the South County line, and at State Road 60, it's seven and a half miles off. So any construction that could be built has ramifications later that insurance company is going to say, hey, you chose to move the line that far east, that there could be some ramifications there. So for a few different reasons, it just makes sense because if you do look at the maps that Andy showed you, that line is almost exactly on 512. So those would be a couple of the main issues there. And then another thing is, when it comes down to calculating the construction loads and pressures and so forth, the wind speed map is one criteria, and it's probably one of the least criterias in the calculation for getting the pressures. Because you have the risk categories, you have exposure categories. So if you're out at the ocean, it's a lot different than you're surrounded by trees and taller buildings and so forth. And then there's also the size of the building, and what comes really into the calculation is the height of the building. So the mile per hour is not a big difference. So a comparison, say our big builders, and they're just home builders, I won't name any names, if they're building right now on the east side of 95 or the west side, it's the same exact house and the same exact design, because the pound difference between that calculation could be maybe seven pounds, 10 pounds, and so forth. It's not a big deal. What makes a big deal is if you're jumping many, you know, lines. Or if you're out of Indian River County and you're in a county that is 140 and less, and we've always been 140 and greater, the 140 kicks in other code changes such as, and code requirements, such as windborne debris. So that means if you're in Indian River County, all structures need shutters, impact glass, or some kind of protection of openings. If you're in a jurisdiction that has 140 or less, then you don't have to. And that would be something that's going to cost the citizens a lot of money. Shutters, thousands of dollars for your house. Impact glass, thousands of dollars for your house. When we're talking the mile per hour, that's sort of the least of the concerns when we're just going from 150 to 160, you know, neighboring wind speed lines. And like I said, in between those lines, there's that interpolation of one mile per hour.
So what is the cost of moving this line to building and construction? Because the area that you're talking about moving it is one of the lowest income areas in the county, and we already have an affordable housing problem. So I just want us to continue to understand that every change we make does have an impact to that home cost. And we wring our hands at affordable housing, that we can't get the builders to bring the costs down, and then we pass regulation that and then we pass regulation that has the potential to add costs to that. I get the safety factor, I'm not disputing that. What I'm talking about is what is that going to look like from a building cost perspective?
So what I can say to that is, just like I mentioned, all the big builders, if they're building one house in what's currently east of 95, and then they have a subdivision west of 95, they're not building or submitting plans for construction that are any different in those areas. Where the difference comes is if they're out on the ocean, like I said, the exposure category, that's where some of those loads really increase. That mile per hour doesn't really increase on cost. So let's break it down a little bit closer so we can maybe understand it a little bit better. Say if you have a trust connection, and the trust connection calls for a certain connector. The designer is going to give you a connector, and that uplift load on that one trust is good for, it requires 900 pounds of uplift. They're going to put a connector in there that is good for 1,100 or 1,500, it's a common connector, and they're going to use those for all the connectors. So if that uplift changes a pound or so, they're not changing that connector, so the cost hasn't changed at all. What I can say, and I'm totally on board with you, is affordable housing and code changes. So there are many other code changes that involve a lot of cost, and I'll just bring up one. So our new code also adopts the new electrical code, which is the 2020 electrical code. One criteria in there is that every structure needs to have an emergency disconnect on the outside of the structure, and that's for the firefighters. So the firefighters have been arguing that for many years, it's finally in there. So you'll see a lot of houses just have a meter on the outside and the disconnect's on the inside. That'll change with a disconnect on the outside. And that's something that costs money, and then when you build in the subdivision, and it's $200 or so per house, that's a code criteria that costs them money. What I'm trying to indicate is the wind speed lines only are not affecting cost on construction. Unless, like I said, you're going to jump from 160 and go all the way down to many other values. So another example, if a big builder is building a couple of counties above us, their wind pressures die down significantly. If they're going to submit plans up there, they are going to be different compared to the Treasure Coast area. And that same builder that's building down Miami is going to have different plans. But in this region, those builders are having the same exact plans and documents.
Okay. My last question relates to insurance. So you're telling me that unlike when you move like flood zone maps, moving the wind speed map is not going to negatively impact somebody's insurance by being added in a different category than where they were before?
That's accurate, that's true. And the cost difference between that is tremendous. So when we move flood lines and so forth, we're talking about elevating and bringing in more fill and so forth. This has none of those ramifications comparatively.
I just want to make sure I understand all that because this is something that we are not necessarily required to do, we're choosing to do to align, like the state isn't making us move the map. So I just want to make sure I understand the totality of that, so. Other questions before I open the public hearing? Yes, Commissioner Moss, and then John.
Thank you. Just one question. So should this be approved, then the county will be in sync with the state? Is that, that's correct, right? So, but this is a change for us. So did the state change from three years ago?
Uh, no.
No, okay.
The lines in our area, there's a graph, it changed, it wiggled a little bit, but it's not a big change, no.
So the state was, the state had this three years ago. This is not, not new regarding to the state, thank you.
Yes.
It's just a follow-up question for the, for the chair. So the insurance, if the homes that are currently built, you know, with the existing, and they're built, what is it, to 140 right now?
Depending on where you locate it, either 160 or 150. We have no 140.
Okay, 150. So i-if those, if we move, if the lines moved, and it's now 160, are those homes that are built to 150 with the insurance, you know, industry, are there, is there going to be an impact because it's saying that they should be 160, but they were built prior to this change, you know, to 150?
I can't speak for the insurance companies, I mean, because we're seeing some drastic things take place with the insurance companies, but the codes and so forth aren't retroactive like that. There would be no penalty for the building codes or regulations in that aspect. But the insurance companies, I don't see that happening.
Probably likely, more likely, you just provide a greater discount because it's built with, than a higher wind speed, correct?
I mean, I would hope so.
I have no trust in the insurance industry.
From your lips to their ears.
So I wouldn't necessarily count on that. What'll probably happen is they'll say, well, now you're in this category, and your house was built to X wind speed, so you need to agree.
I just think of the roof situation that we have right now. I mean, that we've, that the state has experienced with the roofs, you know, the dimensional shingles, what it's, should be good for 25, 30 years, and insurance companies won't renew unless you put a new roof on in 15 years. So are they gonna, it's not saying that this is the case, but are they going to go back and say, maybe we need to shore up the shraping or the bracing, you know, if you want us to renew? I'm just, just, but...
That's a very difficult concept to do.
It is.
An engineer will advise that, you know, to restrap an existing home. I do believe that, well, again, you can't predict what the insurance industry is going to do. They'll find a way to ensure that you're paying them ample fees, but, or, the convenience of ample fees. But I do believe that it will alter the market a bit, that when, when this goes forward, people look at that as another criteria as they're purchasing a home, the same way as they look at, was your home built before 96? Well, they didn't meet the other standards. And it'll be a new line for people to look at to reduce the rate of housing or not look at a house because it was built before the change was made. That's, I believe that that's a very strong possibility. In addition, it could have a positive result in the fact that my Safe Florida program is now being refinanced. So that's what's happening in Tallahassee, and that's the program that you get reimbursed for the installation of impact windows and shutters. And I believe that this criteria will actually accelerate the likelihood that people will be able to get funding to get their homes rebolstered. Your thoughts?
Yeah, that could be a factor, yes, sir. But I would say the Florida State program is really for the real older homes
Right.
that are noncompliant with Florida Building Code, so prior to the Florida Building Code even being, you know, created.
And there's not enough money in it to cover half the people that need it, so, kind of like ship funding.
Refund that now, and that's up to $10,000 in refund back to your installation.
All right, any other commissioner comments?
I just want to ask the administrator. As you know, we're studying the USA boundaries, and so this obviously goes further west than that, to 512.
All right, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. That was loud, sorry. I just, I'm just going to say that I understand why we're doing this. I don't necessarily disagree, but for that area, I still have some significant concerns about insurance and cost additional that's a little unclear. I don't think we have to do this at this point, although I understand wanting to make everything match the state, but the state hasn't come down like they have in other things, and instead you have to do it. So if we don't have to, and it's a little unclear, I'm for leaving it the status quo, but I also am used to being an outlier on these things, so I, I get that, but...
What you're suggesting is wait for a mandate.
I just, I, I don't trust the insurance.
It'll come if we, if we wait long enough.
I just don't, I guess maybe I don't understand what the downfall would be to us not moving it west of 95.
I think one downfall is in the future, when we have a lot of development over there, that those people will be possibly in some big trouble.
But you said that they weren't going to, that we already have the requirement of building to more than 140 anyway.
Right, so not talking about windborne debris protection, I'm just talking about, that's a tremendous area. Like I said, 10 miles, 7 miles, that's a large area. Later on, if the insurance companies want to take advantage of something, that would be an easy one to take advantage of. Saying, hey, for all this time, this has been built at 150, and it should have been 160 for all these so-called years.
So your theory is that if we change it now and there's nothing there, it's better than changing it in the future when there is stuff, even though it could raise the cost and the insurance for what could possibly be built?
Yeah, and I think we're also looking to, you know, the Oslo Interchange is going in, and we know that at some point, that area is going to be, look different than it does today. That is the largest disconnect between the state and our line, that's the 10-mile area. So potentially, you could have commercial development and other things in that area that are quite a bit out of sync with how the state recognizes those lines. So that was one of the things we thought about during this.
Yes.
You, you can't sell a home without shutters today, correct? I mean, shutters have to be available for all openings when you...
For new construction. If you have an existing home that never had windborne debris protection, you don't have to install that in order to sell it, you could keep it as is.
But all new construction has to.
After 2001, yes.
Yeah, I, I think even seen recent transactions with older homes that were built in the late 90s, they require that stack of shutters to be strapped in the garage and ready. Otherwise, they're not going to move forward.
Yeah, I have seen...
Again, as you said, either the insurance companies, the banks, you know, when you're getting financed. So either way, I think everybody's in the number of having to be shuttered and secured. As you said earlier that, well, you're going to be in some trouble out west. Did you mean the peril, or did you mean as far as getting financing and insurance and that matter of in trouble?
Yeah, I would indicate that if it's that far off from what's been recommended by the engineering society, that that's an easy way for lenders, insurance people, other people to say, hey, your county chose this line here, and it really should have been, why, we went out like a mile off. If we're that far off, it's just an easy issue. So answering that question just clicked. So if you look at our county above us, Brevard, and St. Lucie County below, that line still goes in the same area, and their line that they've chosen has been further that way. So when you compare and look at our line that we chose compared to theirs and ours, that's off. So that's another easy thing that they can say, hey, Brevard chose a more accurate line. St. Lucie County for years has chosen a more accurate line. Why'd we stay at 95?
Yeah, so if I understand this right, we're getting closer and better compliance with what the state's model is, number one, and number two, by future housing market will be better hardened, so to speak, which would mitigate a major hurricane coming through here with different things that we would have to collect and pick up because presumably, we'd have stronger-built homes. And for those reasons, I motion to approve the staff recommendation.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Lor with a second by Commissioner Fleischer.
I, I just want to say that I think the, the both of us were out there in 2004 and '05.
And '06.
And just by you, when you said that, I remember where we were and what we were doing. And looking back, as we looked down south, who had the brown requirements, they were in far better shape. Now, that's, I'm not playing meteorologist because the storm could be off a bit, but the impact was, we were far better, they were far better bolstered up. I don't know, I personally, I'm, I'm going through that too there, you know, with the impact windows and getting them in, and I, I think that it's a very, you said it, it's not an affordable process for the average person. It's, it's just not. I mean, I do a couple at a time, I just can't do the whole home. But there would be a likelihood that new construction will have that existing and raise the price a bit. But looking at the aftermath, that, that's the key.
Yes, Commissioner Moss.
Let me ask one more question. How does this affect, if it does, existing modular or mobile homes? There are a number of those in the South County, for example.
All right, so mobile homes are regulated by a different set of maps. So as strange as it sounds, they're not regulated by these maps. And then when we're permitting, we're not regulated by these maps. They have areas, theirs are regulated by like zones, and all the mobile homes that are manufactured have to be certified for a zone. So it's a lot different.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No, the, the irony of it all is, is that the, those modular homes, that, because they're not mobile, they stay where they're, where they get planted, they actually did far better than the sticks and brick. And it, it was amazing, but they did far better in, in all three storms, the, the serious storms that we had. The only, they lost carports, they just blew out. But the homes themselves stood up better than your stick-and-brick home. It was just, I guess because they shift and move, and they went with the flow a little bit. But, yeah, they're, they're a whole different set of standards, yes.
All right, any other comments? Yes.
Can you, Andy, Scott, can you share with the board what you're going to, if, once this, if this passes, since it's effective immediately, what are you going to do to communicate this to our local building industry, our builders, and so we get the word out?
Yeah, so this would become effective midnight on December 31st. And since this is a three-year cycle, we're dealing with these updates almost continually. So we have a pretty, pretty well-worn path of getting the information out. I know Scott has already been having off-hour on the weekends, conferences and such with engineers, builders locally to kind of get the information out.
Thank you, just wanted to make sure there, there's a plan in place to get the word out.
All right, well, we have a motion by Commissioner Lor for approval with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, aye. The motion carries 3 to 1 with Commissioner Ehrman absent. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we will move on. We already did the public discussion items, so we will move on to county administrator matters, American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, proposed spending plan revisions.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, we are proposing revisions to the, the spending plan for the, the American Rescue Plan. It's highlighted in the table, essentially, the response to the public health emergency. That category was there for the purposes of addressing ongoing COVID-19-related response with departments. It was previously allocated $125,000. $125,000. And there's unspent funds, and they're not anticipated to be needed. There was additionally another $75,000 related to COVID-19 sick pay benefits. Those all have been expended, all the benefit payments being made, and there's a balance of $72,152. And then it, the board will recall that the, in an effort to ensure funds were spent related to our housing programs, we kind of, you rate, when you raised them, but also removing this, and we removed those spend limits that will enable staff to ensure funds allocated to the programs with the highest demand and would need without risking. And I want to point out, or just because it was a conference, topic of that discussion was the low-income housing tax credit project, $340,000 is still preserved. Staff is also proposing a reduction of $853,000 for workers performing essential, essential work. Money was budgeted for, you know, for straight time and overtime, as well as for claims against our workers' compensation. We, we find that they have, one, they're straight and overtime's been paid out, and there exists about $763,000 in allocation to the workers' comp. And so we're moving that, we want to move that over. And then where it's ultimately going to be going is two places. Well, there's one other one I want to bring up, the South County Water Treatment Plant. The project, it was, was estimated at 14.5, 14.5 million, almost 14.6. Staff is proposing to allocate funding no longer for the project in the amount of about $975,257,000. So where, where the money would go, it'd be reallocated, one, the Clerk Kurt's office, they're continuing to do some IT upgrades, $70,000. And then we would also budget additional funds to the tune of the, what was it, $975,000 and $257,000 to the, the Felsmere broadband project. The city did a study, the county also did a study, they came up with similar results. The county's also looked at, on the mainland area. So the, the results of the study did indicate that the Felsmere is by far the most undisturbed area in the county. So staff's proposing the allocation of 3.4 million to support the Felsmere broadband improvements. The chart does kind of, in the, in the last page, kind of go over those again. Please remember, there's a $31 million ARP allocation, and we have to have it encumbered by December 30th of 2024 and expended by December of 2026. So that, that's the item that we have, and staff is recommending that you approve this reallocation of funds for the, with the new proposed spending plan.
All right. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Flesher?
No, Madam Chair, I know that you've been working on this for quite some time. And the unfortunate part is you now are the chair, so you can't make that motion. But recognizing the fact that you've been working on this project, and we can make a go-forward, I make a motion for approval for staff.
Madam Chair and Commissioner Flesher, there was a second part of that motion was for the chair, I apologize, for the chair to execute the Felsmere broadband agreement that's in the actual recommendation.
And that's so included, sir.
Fantastic. Included with the second as well. Other comments, questions, concerns? Anybody from the public? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Ehrman absent. All right, we will move on. We did our time certain to Parks and Rec and Conservation, ELAP recommendation for finalization of draft ELP guide. Welcome. Wendy, don't go too fast on that downhill slope. I'm telling him.
Right up is very difficult.
Have to toe her back up. You're fine.
Okay.
We got it.
I'll control it. Yeah, I'm going to kick this off. Good morning. Thank you so much. We are happily bringing you the Environmental Lands Program Guide Draft for Review and Approval. And we've got a quick little slideshow here, so I'll just try to stick to my slideshow so I don't get off-topic. So one of the things we'd like to do is just kind of re, you know, repeat, rinse and repeat the information. For those that may not know, the Indian River County Conservation Lands Program was developed in 1992 with its first bond referendum for $26 million. And we had a second bond referendum that was issued while that first bond referendum was still actively being utilized with our land acquisition advisory committee. In 2004, a $50 million bond referendum was issued, so that was the second bond referendum. And both of these bonds resulted in the purchase and acquisition of $138 million worth of properties in Indian River County for the protection by which those two bond referendums were issued. One caveat to the second bond referendum was that historical properties were included in acquisition consideration and weighted accordingly. So, there we go. So these, again, these bond referendums resulted in just under 12,000 acres of permanently protected conservation areas. And this included our partners like Florida Communities Trust, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, as well as others. The county directly manages 2,300 acres now under the Parks Recreation and Conservation Department. Then we have other partnerships, including St. Sebastian River State Park, who manages roughly 5,600 acres, as well as U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, who manages Pelican Island National Wildlife Refuge. We also have other properties under Conservation Eastments that's totaling a little over 3,700 acres. So in, in March, the county commissioners asked us to put out a bond referendum requesting approval by the voters for a general obligation bond in the amount of $50 million with a 20-year period of time. And that bond referendum was approved by the voters with 78% majority passing. From that time, which was November of 2022, we've convened to work with what we are now calling the ELAP, Environmental Land Acquisition Panel, which the, the board had guided and directed and appointed members to. So part of developing the program includes an environmental land program guide. Through the first two bond referendums, the guide was developed, or a program guide was developed, and so that's the basis for this new and updated guide that would be reflecting the new bond referendum. And in that guide, and, and part of the process was to create the Environmental Land Acquisition Panel and formally form that panel that would be meeting regularly to do everything from the beginning, which is including the program guide, developing the program guide, making recommendations and approvals for that, as well as following the process through for acquisitions, and which will eventually result in parcels being purchased. So the nine ELAP members include Samantha McGee for District 1, Janice Broda for District 2, Daniel Bott for District 3, Peter O'Brien for District 4, James Connington for District 5, and then we have four at-large members, Heather Stapleton, Jeff Beal, John Orkut, and Roland DeBois. And these members, we would like to thank them for their time, energy, and effort, because going through this guide and the, making the recommendations is a lot of work and a lot of reading and a lot of technical review of the document. And we really appreciate their time in the previous meetings that they've given, as well as their own personal time in making recommendations and reviewing all of the material to date. So the ELAP convened on August 15th, and Peter O'Brien was approved as the chairman, and Roland DeBois was approved as the vice chairman. And we had meetings held on September 19th and October 17th, by which the ELP guide was taken from the staff draft form that you had previously approved to eventually the point that we're at today. And Wendy is going to go over the changes. And highlight some of the significant things that were modified from the previous version to this version. So if you have any questions, she can answer those.
So really, the, a lot of the changes were to the technical sections, the administrative sections, actually chapters 1 through 4 were reviewed very quickly. But the flow that you see in front of you for the table of contents was finally added, once we were able to obviously refine all of the internal information. And the chapter titles have all stayed the same. Staff took the liberty of reorganizing some of the information just to make it flow better. And one of the changes is, for example, we took the definitions and moved that, the appendices and some other minor changes, but I'll mention that later.
So this is what I was mentioning. In order to better organize the guide, we added the table of contents, we moved the definitions, and we added a glossary section, which we felt would help the public understand some of the terms that we were using. We added a list of acronyms. Obviously, a technical document like this is very heavy in acronyms, and you can get lost in trying to figure out what one means. So now we have a section in the back that'll explain all that. And then we formatted the appendices so that there's a list of them instead of just randomly including them. So as I mentioned, the bulk of the changes you're going to see are really towards the end of the document. The table of contents obviously was updated based on the content. There wasn't any change in the introduction or the summary of chapters. Chapter 1, we really have the same goals with that. The purpose is for this guide to kind of outline the, the process in general. Our objectives are outlining the procedures for how to acquire the land and manage it. And the policies, all of these stayed the same from the original guide. We're just reiterating it here just for clarity. So Chapter 1, we did add a definition for the acquisition consultant. That definition is now found in the back of the document. As I mentioned, those were all moved to the glossary section at the end. There were no changes to Chapter 2, which is the responsibilities and the relationships. That stayed the same. Chapter 3, once again, really very minor changes. What the ELAP wanted to do was clarify the definition of purpose. And really, the, the overriding issue with that was to define that purchase doesn't necessarily simply need to be, be simple. It could include just taking away development rights. So Chapter 4, we updated the introductory paragraph to 2023 guidelines. We also added a whole series of grants in there. There were several federal grants that the ELAP wanted to include, and, and some additional state grants. And we also described the grants a little bit better and kind of ordered them a little bit better. And we also added a statement that this is not inclusive, that certainly there's other grants that down the line could be included, but this was a good start based on our experience that we have to date. Chapter 5 is the land acquisition process. That had a lot, that was probably the bulk of the discussion that the ELAP had, a lot of technical discussion on the terms and trying to figure out, you know, what made sense. I've bulleted the, the major changes. Obviously, adding the word approximately wasn't a huge change, but we did add some clarity to what county outreach would mean. We changed the word exotic to invasives, which is now the technically correct term for that. We deleted planning within section, within Phase 5, and we also clarified how the project proposals will be routed, because back when the original bonds were done, there was a little bit different structure to the county. And now the routing needs to take place in just a little bit different format, just for it to make sense. And then Chapter 6, the land management, really very few changes, except for, once again, a global change from exotics to invasive. Does anybody have any questions so far on any of that, before I go into the appendices? Okay. Thanks. So the first appendix, like I said, that's going to be the glossary where we have the acronyms, the definitions, and we added a list of terms, which we thought would really help the public and the readers understand better what, what is included in the document. And then putting it as an appendix, I think makes it easier to find. Appendix B has now been labeled as the Environmental Land Acquisition Nomination Form. It still remains a fillable form, really no change to the format, except to update the email addresses to our new website and reflect all of that. We added the Appendix C, County Resolution. We added the actual resolution that was signed and executed from the clerk's office. There were no changes to the comprehensive plan excerpts, except that we now label them as Appendix D. This is where a lot of the discussion took place, especially on the second meeting. There was a healthy debate about a lot of the changes. Interesting debate. A lot of it was centered on trying to make sure that the parcels that were selected really made the best use of the resources and the money that's being allocated. So for the first section, really what changed there is we had the potential habitat and the corridors and greenways kind of flip-flopped from a 15 to a 10, and then one from a 10 to a 15. I think the driving factor there is that we've had a lot of focus on the Florida Wildlife Corridor, which is obviously something that the county wants to focus on as well. So there was a lot of desire to include that kind of recognition. The landscape evaluation factor did not change, but there was a greater emphasis on increasing the recreation and education value, because that is something that we feel like the public benefits from these purchases. So we didn't want to not, I, I believe the ELAP did not want to minimize the importance of having the recreation and education value. So not a huge amount of changes. It wasn't as if any of the criteria were removed or the titles were changed. It was simply just a minor change in scoring. And then when we get into the property acquisition considerations, those are less from a technical ecological perspective and more on the actual parcel itself in terms of appraisals and vulnerability and all of those aspects that aren't really the sciency part of it, but they're the real acquisition. How do we take this property and make the best use of it? So from that, we did have a minor change on the property need versus alternatives from a 12 to an 8. And then we did also have the cooperative acquisition change from a 6 to an 8. So the others remained the same. And overall, the ELAP, at least from my understanding of it, was pretty comfortable with the way that these were allocated from the original guide. So those are really the only changes to the matrix. The minimum criteria, we now label as Appendix F. And the changes that were recommended by the ELAP, we added obviously the ELAP acronym to the page. We didn't have a name for this committee at that time. We changed Item C to clarify existing accepted terminology for listed species. They're not any longer species of special concern, they're just imperiled. And then the term adjacent was replaced to within, because it was, felt that it should make sense that if we were looking at a piece of land, it needed to be composed within that corridor. And with that, that is the entire set of changes that we're suggesting. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioners, questions? Yes.
This is amazing. I was trying to picture, though, how it would work, and specifically the matrix. I'm looking at Chapter 5 and Phase 3, evaluation prioritization. And if you look at natural community evaluation, that's number one. And that describes property that has not been significantly altered by man-induced activities. So it's expected to have a higher ecological value. And there are several other classifications. And then when it gets to number 5. And then when it gets to number five, that's recreation and educational value, and this is a property that provides an opportunity for environmentally significant land protection, but also has potential for multiple uses and will receive higher scores. I was just trying to picture how that's, you know, it's going to shake out, I guess, you know, basically. And just as, and it's in here, so it's not, I don't need to remind anybody, but the purpose is to preserve and protect, that that's primary. And then secondarily, as a recreational use, but we certainly don't want, I'm just concerned, shall we say, that we end up, you know, destroying something unintentionally, destroying something that we're seeking to protect. And if it's possible to have safeguards in place for that, I would certainly appreciate it.
Well, we always, every time that one of these properties is considered, a management plan is developed. And as part of that management plan, you have a great point, and that actually was brought up during the ELAP discussion, making sure that any of the public access improvements don't interfere in a negative way with the actual, you know, habitat conservation and wildlife preservation. We've always been able to work through finding the highest and best use of these properties. And if the properties are, take North Sebastian as a good example of amazing scrub habitat for a very imperiled species. If you notice there, the public access improvements are actually very conservative. We have the small parking area, and we have the trails and such, and we do a ton of programming out there, but it's always done as a secondary to the overriding focus, which is the protection of the land and the resource values. So I think the management plan is that is fleshed out, and all of those have to come back to the board for approval. So they're drafted with the consultants and with staff, and we do our best to try and make sure that things make sense. But obviously, you guys will see all of those management plans and provide us feedback on whether or not you think that other components need to be added or taken out. But you're right, it is a balancing act, and we certainly want to make sure that we're using the highest and best use of the properties.
I appreciate that. Was there any discussion regarding how this consultant will be chosen? I know you have the definition now, but was there any discussion?
We actually did an RFP for, and I think you've approved the ecological consultant that's going to do the due diligence work, and we have an RFP that just got closed to select the acquisition consultant. So we had a, we took the criteria that was used for the prior acquisition consultant for the scope of work for the RFP, modified it, obviously, to make it current, and let that out. And we have, we're in the process of going through all of that.
So what'll be the next step on that, then?
Well, once the committee makes a recommendation, we'll bring that back to the board for you guys to approve.
Thanks.
Other questions?
Madam Chair, no. I'd like to, Wendy, thank you for the presentation. And I also want to thank all the members of ELAP for getting this done. It's an all-volunteer board, appointed and selected, and they do so, and it looks like they got it.
Actually, the discussions were extremely productive. And I thought that everybody took it very seriously and worked very hard. And the reason we're able to come back to you so quickly is they did a lot of homework and came to the meetings prepared, which was fantastic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, with a second by Commissioner Moss. Anybody from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero with Commissioner Ehrman absent. With that, we will move on to county attorney's matters, charging criminal defendants additional fees. Mr. DeBra.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. Oh, sorry, good afternoon. Currently, Florida statute 939.185 allows a county to charge $65 in court costs to a defendant that is found guilty of a crime, misdemeanor, felony, delinquent act. The split of that goes 25% to local court funding, 25% for legal aid programs, 25% for the law library, and 25% to juvenile assessment centers and alternative programs. Last year, we collected just short of $100,000 in those costs, as far as, currently, what has happened is that a county has began charging $65 per crime convicted. That was challenged by the public defender. It went up to the Florida District Court of Appeals. It was affirmed that that was a legal thing that they could do. So they began charging per conviction of a crime. For example, if I was charged with driving under the influence, driving on a suspended license, and leaving the scene of an accident, currently, I would only pay $65 if I pled guilty to all three charges. Under the new scheme, I would be charged $65 per crime, resulting in $195 in costs. In conversations with our clerk, Mr. Butler, it's his estimation that that would increase our possible collections to a little over $400,000, a jump in $300,000. That could see a significant increase in funding for those four categories. The county code codifies this, and I am asking today if the board would support increasing it to the $65 per crime conviction or leaving it at the $65 per defendant. I must point out that the 19th Circuit public defender, Diamond Lyte, has expressed her displeasure with this and will probably challenge it as far as her office is concerned. However, that's, you know, completely up to her and her staff. Otherwise, it has been received favorably by the state attorney's office and the clerk's office, and I ask for your pleasure and direction if you want me to go forward with this and advertise it for a code amendment or not.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lore with a second by Commissioner Fleischer. Any further comment? Anybody from the public?
No.
All in.
I hear the concern from counselor that there might be a challenge, but I view this as a use of fee for those who violate the law. And I don't believe that it's a broad-scale imposition of the community at large. It's basically intended for the violator.
And the $400,000 figure is an estimate. Obviously, we don't have 100% collection rate with the various offenders, but you can see the potential for increase in court funding and the other programs.
Maybe to reduce crime when people have to view it as, hey, look, look at that fee schedule.
The other counties are.
I think I better be good.
The other counties are in the same process that you're in, as far as deciding whether or not to increase.
I'm a positive.
All right. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero with Commissioner Ehrman absent. Next item is the approval of the opioid settlement proceeds.
Thank you, commissioners. Back in June of 2021, the board approved a proposed memorandum of understanding concerning the, with the, sorry, the memorandum of understanding was with the Florida Attorney General concerning the various settlements amount, settlement amounts that were received in the opioid class action suit. If you recall, we got a couple of early settlement amounts amounting to around $140,000 that would go on over a period of time. So it would be, I'm sorry, these funds, the early settlements were earmarked for treatment of Indian River County residents who have entered into the drug court program and go into inpatient treatment. Obviously, that's the most expensive form of treatment, but it is shown to have great value. The larger manufacturers have recently settled, as you know, and so the, such as Purdue Pharma and Walgreens, have contributed much larger sums to the settlement amount. And under the memorandum of understanding, the county will receive about $1.2 million for opioid treatment and related mental health conditions for fiscal year 2023-24. This program is implemented by the Florida Department of Families and Children Services. Because we are a small county, under 300,000 in population, the northeast, I'm sorry, the southeast Florida Behavioral Health Network will administrate the funds on behalf of the county. This is done because they have already established relationships with the various recipients that they allot money to, and they are familiar with the needs for DCF to have reports given back to them. Any award made by the board today will require the recipient of the reward to file reports necessary to account for the expenditure of the funds if they want to continue receiving funds over the 18 years of this program. The board created the Public Safety Council for Criminal Justice, Mental Health, and Substance Abuse back on, back in 2022. They met several times over the year, most recently November 17th, 2023, when they listened to six different presentations for expenditure of funds. You can see on page two of the memorandum, the various presentations that were made, and you can see the final decision made by the council for award of the $1.2 million. That would be $350,000 to the sheriff. That would be for improvements to his treatment wing. Again, it could only be spent on opioid and mental health-related purposes. Substance Awareness Council was awarded $200,000, recommended for $200,000. 150 of that would be for their ongoing jail treatment program and expanding that, and $50,000 for a needs assessment. Indian River Mental Health Collaborative was 400, or 40,000. Drug Court got 305,000. And the Treasure Coast Homeless Council received 282,000. That would be for a, that would be for housing, outpatient, and jail sentence release housing. After the people get out of rehab or after the release from jail, oftentimes, they don't have a place to go. So this would supply them with a year of rent at an approved, in-approved housing. You can see here the recommendation is for the board to go ahead and discuss the recommended allotments and decide on the final allotments. I have prepared a resolution that will be sent to the Southeast Behavioral Health Network that will outline, or that will set forth the allotments that the board decides today. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the timeframe that we have to approve the allotments by?
The, there is no real timeframe. However, because the, this is kind of, we're already a couple of months into the fiscal year, the monies have to be transferred to the various parties. They have to begin ramp up spending for them. So if we delay in recommending the allotments or deciding on the allotments, we delay the opportunity for them to receive the additional funding so they can get going on their various projects.
Okay. And this is a 17-year, an 18-year allocation?
Yes.
For these same projects?
No, it does not have to go to the same projects. This is year one. Some of the recipients may say, you know, I've still got funds, I'm going to continue to use them, which we can under the program. There may be new areas that pop up. The one important thing that the council decided on was to have the needs assessment done by substance abuse to see where the money should be spent in the future and what the needs of the county are. Is there a need for a mobile outreach unit? Is there a need for more medically administered programs or along the lines of those subjects?
So there's, at this time, there's no, like, benchmarks or measurable outcomes or anything similar to what we always constantly get dinged on for CSAC, but we're going to allocate the same amount of dollars without a plan?
No. Any recipient of funds will have to account for expenditure of those funds and weigh their programs, their individual programs' success rate, as far as how they did, what they spent their money on. Get those measurable outcomes that you like to see and that everybody else likes to see so that they will be able to evaluate, so that the council, next year in their allotment, can see, well, you know, this program was very beneficial. This program, not so beneficial.
Okay. Well, looking at what we are being asked to allocate, the first one is $350,000 for the sheriff to build out a wing that's not being used at the jail. There's no plan of how you're going to provide detox services. There's no plan for nursing care. There's no plan. It's purely construction. So, I mean, we just gave him a bunch of money for TCH because he, that was over budget. So I'm not exactly sure how this construction plan is gonna equate to a program when there's not a program listed or any parameters for a program. That's one concern. A second concern is, we're going to be allocating how much over 18 years, 1.2 basically million a year?
For the first six years, I believe it stays or may rise a little bit above the 1.2, then it kind of levels off for a while, and the last six years, it will gradually decrease until the funds are expended.
And we don't really have a one staff person that's going to kind of be administering that or making sure that benchmarks are being met, other than a committee, which is a great committee, don't get me wrong. There's a lot of really knowledgeable people on there, but it's a lot of money, and the intent was to address substance abuse and recovery, treatment, those types of things. And I feel like we're just throwing money around without any kind of plan on how it's going to make a difference in the community. I mean, the Department of Health was, I guess, they didn't get funded.
Right.
And Substance Awareness Center, which I know has a lot of data-driven programs, is cut to 200. But again, we're gonna create a construction plans without a project. So I have a lot of questions and concerns about these, this allocation.
I understand, and I appreciate you knowing that I am simply the messenger.
Yes, I know that. I totally get that, Bill, I do.
But let me respond to your questions. At the council meeting, the sheriff appeared and one of his employees came and explained that when an inmate goes into the jail with a substance, with an opioid substance abuse problem, that they require detoxing. And it's much different treatment, constant treatment, sometimes medically administered treatment programs, such as methadone or something like that, at the jail to assist from the withdrawal symptoms. He is going to convert a wing of his. He is going to convert a wing of his jail in addition to the medical to specifically deal with this. The, that was the details that he gave, and that he also said that this, you know, money would be asked for again next year, this is planning money, then he would ask for construction money in the years ahead.
So we're creating a scenario that it's just going to grow a budget and a program, and two months ago, that wing was being proposed to other groups to be built out to house homeless. So there's not a plan, is my point. And I get that. I, I know it's not you. I don't, I'm sorry, I apologize, go ahead.
No, no, but, no, you have to, you have to let it out.
Let me just follow, let me just follow up with Commissioner Adams' point and, and we'll go from there. If, if you take a look at the schedules, A and B in the memorandum of understanding, you'll see that the, the terms, construction, planning, improvement, et cetera, et cetera, do not appear. That was a concern of mine and others, that expenditure of these funds did not go to bricks and sticks. So Mr. Jackman and I contacted, well, I should say Mr. Jackman contacted the Attorney General's Office. We had a phone conference with one of the representatives that was, that is administering this fund and guiding the fund. He said that this would be an appropriate expenditure under this opioid settlement. Whether you want to follow up with that is completely your pleasure.
Pleasure. And I'm not, I, I totally get it, Bill, you are the messenger, and a lovely messenger at that. But I, I would prefer to take that 350 dollars and roll it into the Substance Awareness Center, who also has a proven treatment program for inmates, and let the sheriff come back next year with some plan other than a, a construction model. I mean, there's just, I don't know, it, it just seems like we're just throwing money, there's, there's no, there needs to be a plan. Overall, there needs to be benchmarks, there needs to be some dial that we're trying to turn, because this is a once in, you know, 18-year ability to make a difference in opioid and drug abuse and treatment within our county. We do need beds, I get that, we need detox facilities, but there's no detox plan with that particular program. Some of the others are paying for outpatient facilities and services, and, and those come with a plan. I just, that's my first blush, but others, weigh in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well taken, but as, as you know, I serve on that council, and councillor was present as well as councillor was present as well by phone, and appreciate all of the input during that meeting. We had to hear a lot of presentations, and one of the presentations you heard, that you referred to from the Health Department was to oversee, to be a, an element of, of guidance, and I, I guess that's what you, you wanted to look at. It did not, it did not get a lot of support, and included a workstation, an employee with a, a plan to oversee the operation at first light to get a benchmark in there. I, I get that. But for a greater concern is that there is, the reason why this funding has come our way is because of the opioid problem. And in addition, there is a serious problem, I think Sheriff might be able to codify that. There has been an ongoing problem, and it has increased exponentially at the jail. In addition, there is, currently, Treasure Coast Health is working with the sheriff and addressing those needs, and there's hospital runs that are involved, and there's detoxification that is being addressed, because people do get a little unruly when, when they're going through withdrawal and substance adjustment. So in answer to your question, there is a plan already, but it's limited, and this is an expansion plan because the, it has grown. So again, looking at all the presentations, I believe that the, the council looked at many of the concerns, but we wanted to earmark the funding to where it would best address the problem, the very reason why this funding will be taking place for 18 years. It was discussed that next year might be a different year. Next year may be a 180 from what we're doing. But we wanted to get the funding to suggest to this commission on where we believe most appropriately, after having reviewed the presentations, that the dollars would be addressing the problem and not creating a, a different program or at least getting to a solution code to what is at hand in the jail, outside the jail, and within the community. And I think substance abuse is going to do a, a lot of monitoring as well.
I completely appreciate that, and I do agree, there is a drug problem with a lot of the inmates in the jail, that is why they are there, and there's not enough services provided to help people transition. So I, I get that. My concern is the 350 is for construction, but it doesn't talk about the added need for medical, the added need for any, anything like that. So that's, that's just my concern.
It's bed space for containment and for the service for the program. The program already exists, it will be intensified. I, I had the same challenge, you know, we're, we're building something, the, the jail that was built and not used, and used it basically as a storage facility because the inmate population did not exceed, and it's a different type of jail in any event. It's not a customary jail, it's a, a lower threat facility, and it, it would be best served in, in a medical arena or a, a treatment program.
It's, so what's the, what's the committee's plan for next year then? As far as, you talked about funding SAC to do a needs assessment, are you guys going to put a plan in place, some kind of guide? What, what's the, what's the goal moving forward? I can understand maybe this year is shoot from the hip because we got it at the last minute. What's the future goal?
We're about three or four months behind the, the program. So in essence, by the time the funding goes out and everything is initiated, it may very well be time to begin to consider, we won't have enough time for an assessment, a, a full assessment, you know, at least over a year or so, to see if there's any results. And quite frankly, I don't think that assessment would take place if, even if we had the full year. I, I believe you need a lot more time when it comes to substance abuse and opioid addiction. I believe that's a long-range plan. But we will have preliminary results as to participation and in the jail specifically as, as far as control and cooperation. And with that in mind, we'll be reviewing this again for another recommendation if I answered the question. But it's not, I, I, I think it's too short of a time to say, all right, so we'll have results and see, is it working, it's not working?
No, no, that's not what I meant. What I meant was more like, do you, are you guys planning to put in place a plan for the 18 years investment of this, of these dollars?
And yes, that was briefly discussed, because again, we'll bring this back and be talking about the future of the investment and what would be best done. I, I have to say that the, the Health Department concept was very interesting, because I think at one point, we will have to present a benchmark, and we will have to present a, a report card as to what is happening, what are the results, are we doing it, not doing it, and where should we do it differently? I, I believe that is up the road, but I believe that with the short time that we had, and we have to get this into a program, I believe that the, the council did an admirable job in listening to the presentations, discussing them, debating them, and getting to where we are today.
Yes, Commissioner? Just a quick question on this. So the wing, the sheriff isn't building a wing, he's converting a wing, is it?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a facility that was established, the sheriff had it as well, as well as Sheriff Raymond.
Well, it's, it's underutilized space, I guess, from some of the comments, underutilized currently?
Yes.
Exists, but?
It's basically a, a different type of jail structure. It's not a, a, it's a closed facility, but it's more or less, it's supervised openly with a large wa, a wide space that is more conducive of those having committed lesser crimes.
Okay. And the, and the Substance, sorry, Substance Awareness Center, they'll be offering treatment in, in that space? It says here, that's what we're?
They are.
$200,000 consisting of 150,000 for jail treatment program?
They have an existing jail treatment program.
They're separate.
That, that is separate from, from anything else. They send counselors into the jail to specifically meet with those folks. The 150,000 dollars would be to hire more counselors to meet with more inmates at the jail more frequently. That would be the reason for the 150. Getting back to Commissioner Adams' point, the board, I'm sorry, the council did see a great need for guidance as far as expenditure of future funds, and that's why they specifically earmarked the 50,000 dollars for the needs assessment study, so that they could evaluate where the money needs to go. Last point that I'll make on this is that the 19th Judicial Circuit Drug Court and the Treasure Coast Homeless Services Council had to work hand in hand. After you go through the inpatient treatment with the drug court, you need someplace to go. Treasure Coast said that they'd be able to house even more folks than they were allotted than, than their current allotment. Judge Schwab also expressed that there is a waiting list, and the list is limited, or the reason there's a waiting list is because there are no funds available. So I thought, well, so if more funds were made available to the drug court and to Treasure Coast Homeless, the board or the council felt that that would be appropriate expenditures of current dollars now.
And I would agree with that, and those are well-vetted programs with parameters and administration and, and that kind of stuff. And I guess I can, if, if we are committing that we're going to do a needs assessment and have some kind of structure for how this is allocated next year, and somebody will just clarify or put on the record that the treatment beds, whether it's new construction or rehab or renovation of the unused wing at the jail is going, those beds are going to be tied to some kind of detox program, I will be happy to support this this year, but I would look for a little bit more structure next year.
Chair, if I could add, first of all, this is, I found out about this item on Friday when we got our agenda, so I was a little taken back that, you know, that I didn't know about it, and obviously, you're on the committee, but you couldn't tell me about it, which is fine. So please note that also, there's 140,000 coming soon for Drug Court, which we gave 140 last year and basically salvaged that.
Correct.
So when you start talking about these wraparound services, what this appears to be, just so you know, the average inmate stays in jail for 21 days. The opioid epidemic, the first 72 hours is the toughest. Every inmate, and I believe it still happens, that comes into booking is immediately checked over by a nurse. I was under the stand, understanding that TCH with their contract, as we all know, that had to be increased, was handling those services. Now, I would like to know more from, even though you guys vetted them, these five agencies, you know, maybe have a presentation to this body? So we can answer, we can ask those questions. But as you mentioned, time is, is time, this is time-sensitive?
Well, to some extent, I mean, it's not an immediacy of, I mean, we, we could do that.
A lot of money.
The next meeting in January, we, we could do that, councillor, no?
Yes.
And if we defer this until January, I don't think we're endangering any funding process.
No, sir.
So. You would feel better too? Then, then why don't we just do that? Okay? Why, why don't we, when's the, the first January meeting? And then we'll, we'll?
The 12th.
Call those individuals in to have, have them present what they're doing?
How they're going to be accountable in the future.
And you'll feel better about the wraparound service.
Right.
To clarify, do we want all the individual, I know the Health Department aren't receiving funding, do you want them to present as well, like they did at the Public Safety Council?
If they're going to be the, if they're going to be the conduit or the overseer?
But that's not in the plan.
Right.
But you would like that too?
Or we could rely on the council to, you know, keep checks and balances on these five.
I, I think it would, that would probably be the best solution. I, I believe that if we can set something up for the first meeting in January and ask those participants, the applicants, to give a presentation before this commission, again, it just, it took two hours to do, so, because they were, maybe they'll be a little less robust, but more informative.
If the board would so direct, I would go ahead and contact the five or six, tell me which ones you want, and tell them to prepare a five-minute presentation before the board at the upcoming meeting on the 12th, and we'll make our decisions from there, or stick to what, what is here in the resolution.
I think if they can send us some of that, maybe whatever they sent to the Public Safety Council as far as application, they can send us that ahead of time, and then just do a quick presentation, five minutes, 10 minutes, not 10, five, whatever. I think the goal is for us to be able to ask them questions. Most of us are familiar with the organizations and what they do in this realm, but I think we have some in, more in-depth questions, so it's more like a, a brief overview and then questions. And if they send us that information ahead of time, we can peruse it and be aware, is that?
Perhaps they can send the information prior to the meeting.
Yeah.
That we can read it.
Prior to the agenda coming out, so we have maybe like a week or two to go over it.
Some had slide presentations, others had handout, yes?
Commissioner, I believe Natalie, your assistant was, Ashley, I'm sorry, Ashley was at this meeting?
Uh, yes, you were.
Okay. And I'll work with her in coordinating the information that comes in from the various agencies.
That sounds great. So we're tabling this discussion until January 12th?
And clarify five or six.
Are you like clarifying the five that are recommended, or you're also, are we also asking the Health Department?
I, I would say the five that the council decided on.
That would be the most respectful.
Okay. It sounds like we have a bit of a path forward to delay this conversation to January 12th, but I do want to, if anybody from the public wishes to speak before we move forward, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
move forward, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Miranda Swanson. I'm the Health Officer for the Florida Department of Health in Indian River County. I had attended the Public Safety Committee meeting, and that was my very first meeting, and it's my understanding that that committee has existed for many years, actually, identified in Florida statute. Other counties receiving, that are over 300,000 people, actually have a separate council for the opioid settlement dollars to decide the destination of those. And so, when I was contacted by a committee member about putting forth a proposal to this committee, it made sense to me that we would need to develop a strategic plan to have a destination for these dollars over 17 years. It's a large amount of money. If we wait six more months for a needs assessment and not work on strategic planning concurrently, we'll be another year into the mix before we have a plan, and another $1.2 million next year. It is not important to the Health Department as to who does that planning, but the planning needs to be done. Our county needs a structure for this to happen. Every addict is not a criminal. Every addict does not go to jail. Every addict does not go to detox at the jail. And so, our only pathway at this point, because we don't have detox beds in our county, is, would be to go to jail in this process. My concern is there are many families out there struggling with opioid addiction, who have had deaths occur in their family, who are struggling with the effect of this problem, and we need to provide support to them over the next 17 years. We need to develop a comprehensive plan. So, I am very thankful to hear that discussion, and please know that the Health Department is in support of whoever does that strategic planning. But as a county, to improve the health of our county systematically, we need a plan. And those are all my comments, and thank you.
Thank you, Miranda. Anybody else?
All right. Mr. DeBraul, do we need a motion to table this till January 12th, or is consensus good?
Consensus is sufficient.
Okay.
I've got my own.
All right, fantastic. All right, commissioners, I am, because there is a little bit of a time certain for some of our participants on item 15B3, which is the Solid Waste Disposal District authorization to provide LFG easements on the landfill property. I'd like to go ahead and move that to the next, and then we'll circle back with Mr. DeBraul's other items, or Susan's other items. Welcome, Hamachi.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hamachi Matha, Managing Director for the Solid Waste Disposal District. Appreciate you allowing this item to move forward. So, this, in terms of the agenda item, it is an authorization to provide landfill gas easements for landfill property. As you're aware, we have a landfill gas agreement with NO Petro Eco District. It's for this, basically transferring gas from our property to their newly acquired property on Oslo Road, and in order to transfer the gas, we need to put in some pipelines. And so, this easement would accommodate that process. There were originally some easements from our property to the former Eco District, or the former Indianos property, the Indian River Eco District property. However, since NO Petro Eco District has purchased a separate parcel adjacent to them, then we, we're looking at another easement, if you will. Both the staff and county surveyors have looked at these easement documents. Staff recommends approval of the easements to allow the pipeline between our properties. As part of this agenda item, and the time certain, I appreciate, NO Petro has requested that they would like to update the board about their project. We're continuing, they're continuing to make great progress and move forward, and would like the opportunity to maybe address the board for a few minutes, if you'll allow that.
Sure.
Good.
There is a presentation.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
So, we had a presentation. Okay, great.
Okay.
Great.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners, good afternoon. George Herrera, co-founder and CEO of NO Petro. I'm here today to provide an update on our development on Oslo Road. We've made significant progress since the last time we were here, so we're excited to do that. I've prepared a short presentation. I'll just walk through quickly an overview on NO Petro, what we do, and then we'll get right into an update on the development. So, NO Petro's Florida's leader in RNG distribution, that's renewable natural gas. We currently own and/or operate 17 facilities across the state of Florida, starting up in Tallahassee, where we've got two facilities, and including Central Florida Transportation, which is in Orlando, where we fuel the transit system. And it's important, because ultimately, the success of this project, of this development, is really bootstrapped with our existing infrastructure and the fueling facilities that we have across our state. And this is a actual map of our different facilities. So, just a bit about natural gas. So, currently, for heavy-duty transportation, it is becoming the predominant alternative fuel. So, for transit systems today, approximately a third of our country's transit buses run on natural gas, and approximately 50% of every garbage truck that's being purchased today runs on natural gas. And by us capturing the flared landfill gas, cleaning it, and injecting it into the pipeline, we'll be able to supply all those trucks in Florida that we fuel with renewable natural gas. This is, Cummins is the largest manufacturer of engines in the U.S., and they now manufacture every single medium and heavy-duty engine available. And this is important, again, because it's a testament to the industry and the continuous transition of heavy-duty vehicles to natural gas. It's much cheaper, it's cleaner, and it provides the same exact performance as a diesel counterpart. This is an aerial image of our Central Florida Transit System fueling facility. Central Florida Transit is comprised of City of Orlando, Orange County, Seminole County, Osceola County. We built that facility in 2016. It's been a very successful project, and much of the production that we will produce here at the Indian River County landfill will be utilized to fuel Central Florida's transit system. So, now, turning to the Indian River County RNG production plant. So, this is an architectural rendering that represents what the footprint will look like. So, this is exactly what we're building on Oslo Road, and I'd like to recognize one of our colleagues is here today as well, both Alon Castro and Mike Whitten, who's our Senior VP of Operations. So, this, he's spearheading and overseeing the development of this facility. As you can see, it's, it will be an aesthetic improvement to the area, and we will be breaking ground on February. So, a bit about renewable natural gas, and so it comes from landfills, dairy farms, and wastewater treatment plants. Essentially, all the organic waste decomposes, turns into biogas, which is comprised of approximately 50% methane. The remaining 50% is carbon dioxide, nitrogen, oxygen. So, what we do is we capture that flared gas, we'll clean it, remove the other constituents, until we're left with 100% methane, and that's what we will inject on Oslo Road. So, the RNG plant will be the second landfill RNG project in Florida. It'll be the first one in South Florida, and it's approximately 400,000 MMV TUs of natural gas will be produced there, which is equivalent to like 3 million gallons of diesel in terms of energy content, which, as a result of the project, CO2 will be displaced in significant amounts, roughly 100,000 tons a year. So, this is the easement that Hamachi just spoke about, where we will essentially place a pipeline with low pressure that will move the landfill gas in its native state, and it'll arrive at our parcel, which we own, the seven-acre rectangular piece of land that you see there. And we'll take that flared, the landfill gas, bring it into our property, clean it, and then inject it, as I just mentioned a few moments ago. A bit of technical information here, but it's a fairly robust system of equipment that we're utilizing to treat that gas, and we actually ordered the equipment in June of this year. So, it's about a 60-week turnaround to receive that equipment. An important enhancement as a result of this project, which, to make everyone aware, is that Florida City Gas, which is the natural gas pipeline utility, they're actually improving the entire county's system as a result of this project. So, historically, the counties had three pods that received natural gas, and they've been separate. So, as a result of this project, Florida City Gas is interconnecting the entire, all three pods, providing more reliability to the grid and being able to service more constituents. And it's a direct result of the RNG production plant that we're building here, here in Vero Beach. In terms of an update, so we filed our major site plan in August of this year. We will be filing a building application this week, and we will be breaking ground on February 15th of next year. Operational, we'll be commissioning between November, December of next year, operational January 15th, I think, or January 5th of 2025. To date, we have invested, by the end of this month, we would have invested $10.6 million of equity, and so we have contributed a significant amount of capital to the project and keeping everything in, in order to begin commissioning at the end of next year. So, essentially, from a development perspective, next month, we expect to have an amendment before you extending the milestones, because technically, in the existing agreement, we had to be operational by, as an outside date of September of next year, and we're not going to be operational until about January 5th of 2025. So, we're about 90 days behind schedule, and that is mainly due to the fact that Florida City Gas took a very long time to be able to finalize its agreements with us, so that we would have certainty that we'd be able to supply and inject into the pipeline, which we were able to finalize that in June of this year. So, with that said, that's essentially an update on the project, but we're moving full speed ahead.
So, awesome. I'm so glad to see this moving forward, and this is one of, this is a really exciting project happening, and I know it's been a long time coming. But with the project delay because of Florida City Gas, how does that impact any contractual stuff we have going on? Or is there one? Is that a problem?
So, we are working on an amendment with the county, where essentially, to close on our financing, we have to basically have the milestones modified in the agreement, which would set the landfill gas commencement date as of January of 2025 versus today, which has an outside date of September. So, that's what we're working with the county right now, due to that delay.
Okay, but that's in the process, so we can...
It is, yeah. That's in the process, and we've got to get it done by January, so we can break ground February 15th.
Get that moved forward, so we can, I'm excited to get this off the ground. It's, like I said, been a long time coming, so whatever we can do to help get that done would be great.
Hamachi needs to...
Yep. And we'll have a groundbreaking event for everybody invited in February.
Just one question. The only thing that needs to be changed in the existing contract are the milestones?
So, that was one of the changes, and then we're going back and forth with the county staff on some other items that, for example, there's some improvements that want to be, that need to be done at the landfill, so there's a bit of negotiation there that we still have to do. We're actually here today to do that.
Thank you.
I'm sure I'll add that it's basically, and I met with the gentleman yesterday, it's basically going to be a gas station, and we'll Oslo opening up. I'm with you, I'm very excited about this.
I think it has a lot of possibilities for your economic development that I interchange, too.
Plus, we have, the county does get a taste.
Yeah.
That's even better.
And an important thing I forgot to mention is, this will supply Indian River County's natural gas demand. So, from a hardening of the grid perspective, 100% of the domestic consumption in Indian River County will be supplied by the RNG that we're producing at this landfill. So, if, in the event where there is some kind of disruption in the pipeline coming into the state, because all the gas comes in from out of state, we will have a local native source of gas being produced in Indian River County, which is remarkable.
I just think it's awesome that we are being able to monetize resources that most people throw away, whether it's the natural gas or through some of the leach aid and those types of things. There's, you know, your trash is my treasure, so bring it on.
A whole lot of steam going on in South County.
I'm sorry, Hamachi, go ahead.
No, Commissioners, you know, staff has been working with NO Petro. Certainly, we're excited about this project. We recognize, you know, there's some delays going on. We're working with staff. I think our demonstration is to bring you the easement documents today for approval, which shows sort of our commitment to work with them on, on this project. Certainly, we're going to meet with them this afternoon, go over some of the requested changes, and bring that to you at a future meeting.
Fantastic.
Well, let's get this one out of the way.
All right.
Got a champ?
Of course.
Motion to approve. That right away easement.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Flesher, second by Commissioner Lor. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Ehrmanhausen.
Thank you.
All right. Back in order to Ms., huh? Okay. Ms. Prado, authorization to proceed with foreclosures on code enforcement.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Bringing to you another proposal to move forward with foreclosure on another property. This current property is actually located more in the southern part of the county. It's located at 136 15th Street Southwest in Vero Beach, Florida. It's just off of Old Dixie Highway, if I may. It's located in the Dixie Heights subdivision. Sorry, normally I have a PowerPoint, and I will completely admit, I can put that one slide off my plate this time. In this case, it came forward, and it started in 2017. It had the gambit of violations on it, from junk, trash, and debris, RV used as a living corridor violation, junk vehicles, you know, weeds in excess of 12 inches. So, that's a full array of items that we see there from a code violation standpoint. This case is a little bit of an older case, coming from 2017. There was a $100 per day fine running on this case since that timeframe. Today, the total fine is $229,900. The assessed value of the property is around $30,000, so clearly, our fine outweighs the assessed value. I can tell you, so it's going to be one of those ones where we're definitely not going to recoup, you know, our, the amount that the fine is on. However, I think it would still be beneficial to move forward, move forward with this foreclosure. Our cost for outside counsel that we've been using is estimated at around $7,000. Depending on how much litigation is actually done, it's been winding up a little bit less than that with the past foreclosures that we've been handling, so it's been running smoothly on that since. So, at this point in time, we're recommending that the board move forward with foreclosure on this property at this point in time.
Okay. Well, I know this is a situation where it might cost us a little bit more than the value, but I think it's important to continue to clean up that process and move these things forward. Comments, questions?
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Lor, seconded by Commissioner Flesher. Any comments, questions, concerns? Anybody from the public? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, you too. All right. We are going to take a seventh inning stretch here for two minutes. Two. Nobody... You guys ready to reconvene? Call the meeting back to order. Our next item is 13D PFAS class action settlement. Henry, Henry, Mr. DeGraw.
This will be Mr. Keith Jack.
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep going to the wrong attorney. Welcome.
He's the right attorney.
It's all the same.
On this one.
It's all the same. I'm an agent of the principal. Good evening, good afternoon. Keith Jackman with County Attorney's Office. I am an Assistant County Attorney, and we are handling the PFAS class action settlement. Just a little bit of background, exactly what this settlement is about and what PFAS is. So PFAS really stands for per and polyfluoroalkyl substances. And it's a group of manufactured chemicals that have been used in industry since the mid-1940s because of their useful properties. Now, some of those useful properties is that it's heat resistant to a degree, friction resistant, water repellent, and it degrades very slowly over time. Now, because of the widespread use and their persistence in the environment, many PFAS are found in the blood of people and animals all over the world, and they're present in our environment. There are thousands of PFAS chemicals, and because there are so many different ones, it's kind of challenging to study them. But what we have determined, that there are some health effects to PFAS in our environment. But as I was stating there earlier, PFAS is in our environment. It's in our drinking water. It's in our soil, at our near waste sites, or even at the landfill. There's disposal sites when it rains and so on. It gets into our water system. It's in our food and food packaging, and even at, I should say, manufacturing or chemical product facilities when they are using chrome plating or electronics and that sort of thing. One of the major contributors to PFAS is the fire extinguishing foam. So this foam is used to extinguish liquid-based fires, and the foams are used in training on the shipyards, airports, military bases, and firefighting training facilities, chemical plants, and refineries. So what we know from this kind of use is that it's impacted the health of the people in the environment. It causes reproductive issues and women fertility issues. It also contributes to developmental delays in children, including low birth weight, accelerated puberty, bone variations, and behavioral problems. It also increases certain cancers such as testicular cancer, prostate, and kidney cancers. It reduces your body's ability to fight disease and so on. So why are we here? Well, because of these harms that happen to humans and to people, animals, and our food. So there's a class action lawsuit. So basically, a few cities, Delray Beach being one of them, City of Camden up in New Jersey filed a lawsuit against 3M and DuPont. And this class action lawsuit was filed on behalf of similarly situated cities. And these similarly situated cities all have public water systems. What they allege is that the defendants knew that their products were in the environment, and they didn't break down over time, and it basically bioaccumulated. So when they first started producing this in the 1940s and 50s, there wasn't much of an impact. It's almost like smoking. It takes some time to actually, to see the effects of what it does. And as time was going on, more and more of the substance was being dumped into our environment. And as a result, our wells and water systems, surface water systems are contaminated. And this brings harm, of course, to the people and the citizens. So in filing this lawsuit, the plaintiffs alleged that they knew this. They knew that it wasn't breaking down, that it stays in your body and accumulates over time. They knew that they were dumping foam near wells. They knew it was going into our landfills, and they decided to put profit over the safety of humans. So they decided to settle because they didn't really want to go through with a case and would, most likely would have ended up with a larger settlement or a larger verdict. So they decided to go with the settlement. So we have two companies that decided to throw in the towel, and that's the 3M Company and DuPont. And with each settlement, there are two phases. So basically, the class members, which the city is a part of, Vero, actually, the county, is a part of. There are two phases. There's phase one. If there's any PFAS in your, in our water system, that would qualify as phase one. If there are no PFAS in their water system, that would be phase two. But you're only part of phase two if you're required to monitor for it. Based on our testing, we haven't tested all 16 wells. We have 16 wells, about eight in North County, another eight in South County, and we're all drawing from these wells. Some of our test results came back positive for PFAS. We're running some more tests right now, which I will get to later, but let's get back to the settlement. So with 3M, the opt-out date for whether or not you want to be included in the class was December 11th, 2023. That was yesterday. So it's too late for us to opt out. Now, why wouldn't we want to, why would we want to opt out? Well, if you were to opt out, it means that we would have to file our own lawsuit. We wouldn't be part of the settlement. Because the proposed settlement for 3M is between $10.5 to $12.5 billion that they have set aside, and also another $5 million for costs. If we were to opt out, it means that we'd have to file our own lawsuit, hire our own experts, and actually litigate this for who knows how long. It would require a lot of staff time and probably most likely for us to hire outside counsel to just deal with this kind of thing because it's very technical. So most cities and most counties have decided to opt in and not take on the lawsuit themselves. So with this $10.5 to $12.5 billion, what they will do is, once we do our testing, it requires us, you know, if we're in the class, to run the test. We've already submitted for the testing, and they're going to send us all the equipment that we need to do our testing and do our baseline testing. Once we do our baseline testing, we'll be able to determine exactly how much PFAS is in our system, our water system. And from that point, once everyone has done it, and all the people that's in the class, there's actually time limits. Pretty much, we have the next, it's about the next 45 days or so is when that time cuts off. So after 45 days, the claims administrator is going to, you know, gather all the information, look at all the people that turned in there, didn't opt out and opted in, and then determine how the money would be distributed. We have no idea how it's going to be distributed at this time. The claims administrator has no idea because not all the class members have turned in their information. Now, the key is, if the PFAS levels are above four parts per trillion, then you get a little bit more money. We're not, we're not hoping that's the case. We're actually hoping that it's a lot less, and we'll still get some funding to deal and address with it. But at the same time, it's, we're not, we're not putting it past, we're saying there's a possibility that we could be up there, which is very detrimental to us. And going on to the second defendant settled, they only set aside $1.85 billion. The opt-out deadline for that was December 4th, 2023. They also have phase one and phase two. Phase one meaning if there's any kind of PFAS in your water system, it means that you will get a certain amount of money. If there isn't, then you still get money, especially if you're required to monitor. And we are, as Indian River County, required to monitor for PFAS. As far as testing is concerned, like I said before, we've submitted all our information to the testing company, and they're going to get back with us with results. We should get results back in the next two weeks. And after about two weeks, we'll be able to determine which ones of our wells are contaminated with PFAS. Now, the Utilities Department has been doing a lot and have been doing a lot to address this issue, along with some other issues. They have a nanofiltration system that takes out all of the PFAS. The problem is, is that we have a bypass that goes around that filtration system and then feeds the raw water that's slightly treated back into our drinking water system. So what happens is, some of the PFAS comes out, and it's in our public water system. We're not sure exactly like what levels they're at right now, but, you know, we'll be getting to that soon. The good thing about this settlement is they're willing to pay for the steps that we take to address this issue. Looking at Delray Beach, for instance, they just, they just approved a nanofiltration system, and it's going to cost them $100 million, and it's supposed to be online by 2026. So they didn't have any kind of treatment before, so they were, you know, they were harmed. So, you know, any kind of money that's going to help, I think we need to, you know, take advantage of that. Also, the EPA is going to be regulating PFAS pretty soon. So we anticipate that, not that they're going to require maybe none, but they're going to require that all these public water systems be at pretty much undetectable levels. So we want to get ahead of that. And the Utilities Department has already started working on plans to address the issue of the bypass that we have at both of our water facilities. And again, you know, we would like the support of the county in helping us stay, you know, within, you know, this class and going forward with getting our testing done, turning in our results so that we can get some of this money as soon as possible. Sean, if you want to just talk about what we're looking at as far as treating this situation?
Yeah, I mean, we're evaluating our options right now, and really, it's, we don't bypass. We blend our water, just to clarify a little bit. You know, our majority of our water goes through the treatment process. We blend that water back in because through that nanofiltration, we are removing some chemicals and things like that that are important to stabilize. We talked about earlier about corrosion control. It helps to stabilize that water. So blending that water back in is helpful from that standpoint. We have done some evaluation of this, and while we do have some detections of the PFAS chemicals there, I mean, we're talking extremely low levels. We're talking in the parts per trillion. Just to kind of give you an idea of what that means, it's about a drop of water in 100 swimming pools, size swimming pools, Olympic-sized swimming pools. So very, very small amounts of detection and of contaminants. That being said, it's unclear where EPA is going to go with the regulations. They did put out a draft regulation about a year or so ago. It's out for public comment. I think, well, the comment period is closed. We anticipate seeing a final rule at some point here in the near future. If EPA holds true, I would anticipate maybe getting that final rule right before Christmas. But we don't know when that will come out, and we'll have to react depending upon, you know, what kind of levels we are seeing within the distribution system. Mind you, it's an entry point sample, so once everything, all treatment has been applied, you take a sample as the water enters the distribution system, this rule applies at that point. And so we continue to monitor that, and we will continue to evaluate additional options, if necessary, to enhance our treatment, to address these compounds as necessary.
Fantastic.
Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
Okay, I have any questions from that presentation?
I'm assuming that the ask today is to opt in?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Just to opt in. Just to opt in, there's going to be a hearing for 3M on December 14th, which is two days from now, to determine whether or not the settlement is acceptable. Some things can change. It is between 10 and a half to 12 and a half billion dollars. And then there's going to be another hearing in February for DuPont, and that's also going to determine whether or not that billion dollars is sufficient. So it's up to the judge, but the feel is that they are going to accept it.
All right, that was a motion, Commissioner Fleischer.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
All right, and I will be happy to second that. Is there any other comments? Anybody from the public? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Ehrman absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is of developers agreement between Mandala Village LLC and Indian River County.
Can I bring up the aerial, or can you?
I can bring it up.
Okay, bring up the aerial, please.
Are you taking this one?
Yes.
I'm back to you.
You're back to me. You're back to me.
Need the full circle.
I'm going to, I'm going to, I started this mess, I'm going to finish it out. All right. All right, today we have before us approval of, consideration and hopeful approval of a developers agreement between Mandala Village and the county. You can see on your screens there, the areas highlighted in yellow are the 79 acres that will make up the Mandala Village, that's King's Highway 58th on the right hand, and on the bottom part of the yellow, that is the proposed 53rd Street that will extend from the Devasta Waterway Village project, which is on the right side of 58th Avenue, and 53rd Street will extend to the phase two entrance of Mandala Village and then taper down to a dirt road further on. It's in the county's comprehensive plan, but later on, to finish out 53rd Street and connect it up with 66th Avenue. That way, we'll have a, as of now, a four-lane to a two-lane section, and once Providence Point comes in, if they ever come in, they are going to be responsible for building the other two lanes of 53rd Street pursuant to their developers agreement, which was entered into back in 2014. The difference between Providence and Mandala is Mandala is ready to go now. They are, before the Planning and Zoning Commission for their preliminary plat approval on Thursday night, they are anticipating breaking ground on the project next year. So that's why we have this development agreement before us today. What will they be doing? They'll be dedicating right-of-way. The first strip of right-of-way that has already been developed, or that has already been dedicated, and you can see it here, is 120 feet for 53rd. They will have to dedicate another strip of right-of-way along here of 120 feet continuing on for the length of their project for 53rd Street. They will have to go ahead and construct 53rd Street from the stubout that the county put in, and at their 58th Improvement Project that we partnered with Devast on. They will have to continue that two-lane to their second entrance as far as their development is concerned. And they will need to dedicate a little bit of right-of-way along 58th Avenue as well, and if I'm not mistaken, that has already been developed. They will need to put in turn lane improvements on their section of 53rd Street as well. And, you know, they're going to be providing that important first leg for us. This is, this is an agreement very similar to the agreement we entered into with Providence Point, which is down in this area here. Mandala, like I said, is going to go first, and they're going to start building, and this is the requirement of their PD approval process to construct these improvements. So staff's recommendation is to go ahead and approve the developers agreement with one change. You will see that the right-of-way dedications must be made within 60 days. That's the way the agreement in your backup currently reads. We're going to extend that out to 90 days, and staff has no objection to that. Again, we ask that the developers agreement be approved. And I'll answer any questions. And the applicant is here as well, if you have any questions of the applicant.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. DeBraul? Yes, Commissioner Maus.
Just, excuse me, does the plan still include the hotel? When I looked at the P&amp;Z minutes from 2020, there was a concern raised about traffic.
Yes, it does. Now, the other thing that I should point out is that staff took a look at the entire Mandala Village plan, and they concluded that the two-lane road now will be sufficient to handle all traffic of the development, including the single-family units, multifamily units, and the hotel that is proposed for the site.
All right, anybody else have questions? Any questions for the applicant that has so generously stayed all day with us? If not...
Madam Chair. As the applicant developer will recall, I was not supportive of the project as I was, had concerns about the symbiotic relationship between the hotel and the housing that was planned. That doesn't come into play today. Comes into play today is an adjustment that will move this project and allow for the proper allocated traffic burden to be handled in appropriate manner as looked at by our staff. So with that, motion to approve the developers agreement.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer and a second by Commissioner Lor. Anybody from the public? Any other comments from commissioners?
And again, my initial concern was the relationship on the services, not on the project in its, in total.
Understood. All right, with that, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 4 to 0 with Commissioner Ehrman absent.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, guys, for hanging out with us all day. All right, with that, we will move on to Solid Waste Disposal District. Our first item is an amendment to work order number 18 to GeoSynTech for segment three, cell three, site preparations.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve with a second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 4 to 0 with Commissioner Ehrman absent. Next item is work order number seven to Kim Lee Horn for the Solid Waste Disposal District Annual Financial Reports.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by myself. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 4 to 0 with Commissioner Ehrman absent. And with that, commissioners, it has been a record day here for us. I hope you all have a lovely, lovely Christmas and a very happy and prosperous new year. And don't forget, we are in the South, so eat your collard greens, black-eyed peas, and hog jowl on New Year's Day for good luck. Black-eyed peas, you got to have them for coins.
That's why I got my residency.
Right, there you go. All right, y'all have a great day. We stand adjourned.